Well, all you can do is eliminate one thing and move on to the next.
Yeah. I don't have high tolerance for that. There's a certain point where you have to say, this is never gonna happen. All right, you ready, Betty?
You guys want to move up?
She's getting the microphone.
Do you have any minutes or reports? All right, we have any Commissioner, may they as on reports. We do have the second main government.
Mm-hmm.
Reception tonight.
Is that just a drop-in thing?
Yes. What time is it?
Four thirty.
Four thirty six.
Four thirty to seven thirty, I think.
Four thirty to seven thirty?
I think so.
Oh, I'm dropping in early and leaving early.
That's where I'm at.
My advice is to do the Karl Bogle thing. Did yours do anything?
I did.
I've done pretty much talking about what. Come on, I guess. We got NRA dinner back there.
Yeah. I went for bangs. Should've given you my tickets.
Oh, well, yeah, that one had to pay for them then.
They have an act one?
It's the sponsors dinner.
Oh.
Like a free two.
My small file has started since I started.
All right. Thank Matt. Eric, thank you for coming up with your first share. I'm the instigator more than these guys are, although I think you guys have been a long way in my investigation. I just, before we keep doing Band-Aids and I don't know what the right term is, attempted fixes that we then come back and have to deal with again, I just want to get a global resolution. I want everybody to agree this solves our problem and that if it's, and then therefore we have eliminated this issue, therefore if it's still remaining, there's something else that it is. And we've been messing with the grease trap issue for three years.
I've been here almost two.
And we've tried, I don't know how many fixes, and the smell comes back, and at some point, it can't be the grease trap anymore. I mean, there's just, and I just wanted to get everybody together, and I don't know if, I mean, I talked to Jim Wish last night for about fifteen or twenty minutes. Jim's the same, but he just wants it done. I mean, I think we're all, I know you guys are there too, you guys could be as frustrated as we are. I talked to the mayor last night, he just wants to get it done. Just, can we just come up with a fix, or is that just not possible?
You know, when Jim called us the last time, he'd call, I guess he called, did he start with you or me? I can't remember now. But anyway, I said, well, so I got Eric and our plumbing guy, Kevin, we had a meeting and said, okay, is there any way, how can we bypass this thing? And we just started, we had a good hour-long plus meeting, just the three of us, saying, you know, what are all the ideas we can come up with between the three of us about how to eliminate the grease trap and things like that. And so, and you know, with a low, hopefully a low-cost solution too. And so, that's where we come up with, if the kitchen isn't functioning per what it was designed at originally, then okay, then the code could be relaxed and maybe this idea of this smaller in the room, if you will, interceptor could be put in there if it could easily be done. So then we went up and met with Greg just to measure, and you know, Kevin had a sheet of the different sizes they use and everything, and so it looked like it could be done, but the main thing then is go out and bypass that grease trap. So what we were trying to, originally when we talked to you, Greg, is say, well, just to keep it in reserve, maybe if you could just pipe through it and not take it out, that way if you ever change your operation, you might be able to go back and modify it. But that seemed like it was going to be a high cost, I guess, after you found out, talked to some plumbers. And so, I mean, another possibility is just to, you know, you just eliminate and pipe around it. I mean, the guys didn't want to get in it because it's pretty nasty, you know, and just fill it with whatever. I mean, I guess it could just sit there too, but I'd probably just fill it with flowable fill or something that's pretty reasonable.
Let me ask the question that I can't get an answer to. So maybe you guys, is it for sure the grease trap causing the smell? Hundred percent, there's no chance it's a sewer line, there's no chance it's ground seepage from a main sewer line. The only thing it is is the grease trap.
That's correct, and that's the source.
From my point of view, it's going septic. And Eric, you have to, it's just too big for its size.
I mean, if we pipe, if we pipe around, if we fill it with sand, which I think is what this proposal is, and we pipe around it, does that eliminate this problem from the grease trap?
Right.
If we still have the smell, then we know it's not us. From this, it could be from the sewer line, it could, we know it won't be from the kitchen anymore.
The septic condition will go away, you know, once you've taken care of that. Once you bypass it.
So what happens if we do this? I mean, this is my concern. So we spend the money. This'll be our fourth or fifth or sixth time we've worked to fix it. And I know you guys have done stuff out there. I mean, this, we're all starting to, we're starting to get to a point where we're actually spending real money now, and albeit this is a small fix. Where are we at if we do this and, you know, say we get it done on January 1st, I'm just making a day up. And on the fifteenth, or the fifteenth of February, we're getting the phone calls again. We got sewer smell. What are you gonna do about it? Is it that the point where we can turn to them and say, it ain't our problem anymore? It's your problem?
Well, it really can't be the grease trap anymore.
Right.
I mean, so, I mean, I don't see, you know, and I know the guys in wastewater bin and TV'd and looked at everything, cleaned and flushed, and I think Mr. Wish got some backflow. Yeah, he's got two of them. Got backflows on it now. So eliminating this, you know, we're, you know, you can't be a hundred percent certain of anything, but assuming, you know, it wouldn't be your grease trap problem definitely anymore.
Right.
And, you know, we had started another investigation and tried to figure out some other source, but when you got this thing that's big and stinky right there, it's pretty likely that it, that's the issue. I mean, you know.
And I'm fine with getting this done. It's a relatively low-cost fix, and that doesn't, that doesn't, the cost on this particular fix doesn't bother me. The problem becomes if this doesn't solve it, all the other options start becoming very expensive, I think. I mean, that requires potentially digging up sewer lines, relocating sewer lines. I mean, if this doesn't fix it, then it's not the grease trap that's causing the problem, it's something else, and that's a bigger issue, I would presume.
Yeah, I mean, we had, everybody have to go back to drawing board, because I don't think, you know, if the lines are clean and your grease trap is clean, like, you can clean this yourself, is my understanding, where you wouldn't incur those fees to have this thing pumped anymore. So you're gonna save considerable money yearly just doing that anyway. But, you know, we just have to go back and look at the lines, make sure they're clean and taken care of, you know, go from there. I mean, there's no guarantees with sewer, I found that out, but it all stinks one way or another eventually, but, but, you know, the guys do keep, have a good, try to keep it to a minimum, and like I said, I can't see why then it would be the, it couldn't be the grease trap problem anymore. I mean, once it's eliminated, it's gone, you know, so I mean.
Okay. That answers my questions, you guys.
Man, I'm okay with that. I'm not real thrilled about going around the grease trap. I mean, why can't we go through it?
Well, we can, I've got to do it back.
I mean, I don't like getting into nasty stuff either, but I will if I have to.
Yeah. What was coming up with some of what we're saying is environmental deal, if they had to wear the special respirators and all that.
Go get a scuba mask. I mean, you know, I mean, I've done it before.
Well, on this one, that's what, you know, there's two things. I mean, that's, like I said, we were trying to keep it intact, but say you did go back to your kitchen after talking to Kevin in our meeting, you know, even the largest restaurants have grease traps, maybe half this size at the most, and so you would have to modify this trap anyway if you went back to a full kitchen use, and then you, you know, I guess you could potentially pour concrete in the bottom of it somehow and fill it with the baffles or something, but it'd be quite an operation. But if you just put sand in it, you could always get that back out too.
Right.
You'd wanna, you gotta pipe through it or around it, one of the two.
Right, and then put some sand in it to keep it from floating.
If I was, if it was up to me in advising you, I would tell you to probably go with the cheapest option now, unless you see your kitchen changing, you know, in a five-year window or something.
I just, I see a problem with going around it, because then you're just adding more nineties, and that's never a good thing in a sewer system. At least, not to me.
Well, you'd, yeah, you'd wanna do, you wouldn't do, wanna do nineties, but, you know.
A bunch of forty-fives or whatever you wanna do. I just, then you gotta just dig up more concrete.
More stuff to dig up.
Yeah. So, that's, that's our issue, so, but I'm good with moving forward.
Okay. Let's do it. I think we all have agreement on that, Jeff?
I agree to it. I just, I know you were wanting something, saying that if we do this, then the city's gonna say, okay, or City and Wish is gonna say, okay, you all are done, that's all you tried, the rest of it.
I just, you know, it's just one of those things that, I've dealt with this, dealt with this now for three years, you've dealt with this for three years, you've only had two years of it. You're the newcomer on this, and I'm tired of it, and, you know, if this is the solution that fixes this, I'm fine with it. I just, you know, I, we went through this with Wish and Dawson, it's the only, and, you know, they had, they've had cracked toilets, seals that have been letting sewer gas in. I mean, they've had all sorts of issues inside their buildings, and they continue to blame us for it. I just want, I wanna know we're closing the door on this issue.
Yeah, I would feel comfortable saying, it's not the grease trap anymore that's smelling.
Right.
This, it's not there anymore, so how could it be, you know?
Yeah, this has a high probability of working. I mean, that's, that's how you classify it.
Okay. I'm good with it. Let's get it done, and then let Wish know we're doing it.
You need us to sign anything, Greg?
No, I'd sign it in the bid amount and everything, so we're good.
We're good, Dan.
And we are gonna pipe through it then and fill it with sand?
Mm-hmm. Pipe through this twenty-nine hundred.
Okay.
Send it to the architect and engineers.
I'm telling you what, I'm seriously thinking about.
I didn't want to bring that up.
I'm seriously thinking about, I was walking upstairs today thinking I may move to hire outside counsel to bring a suit against engineers. But I know you engineers, and you don't stand behind anything. I sat in a room of engineers yesterday and made that comment.
I'm sorry, I missed that move.
Don't talk about attorneys, though.
Oh, yeah, they're fair game too. That's why Mark gets them out, somebody else wants to go off.
Very rarely do I get to be up by anybody else, I'm usually the target, so.
I was gonna say, you finally get to pick on somebody else.
All right, we'll get it done, and how quick can they do it, Greg?
I'll call Greg right now, and we get out of here and see what his time is.
Will you also call Jim and let him know we're moving forward on it? You might call Ron Dawson too, just as a courtesy.
Okay.
I mean, this solves this problem. They need to understand that, that we're shutting down the grease trap and effectively capping it. So if there's more sewer smell, they probably don't need to be calling us.
That's no gonna call us. That's, that's why I was saying, it doesn't matter what we do, if there's still the odor, it's still coming to us, because it didn't start until we got there.
I know, and that's why I wanna get it done.
I'm hoping this takes care of it. I'm just aggravated because we put all kinds of money into the system and then.
Is, is the sewer line, the main sewer line, pulling too much air?
I don't.
I heard somebody say something about it pulling too much air and drying out all the P-traps, and therefore allows sewer gas to come through. Kinda seems counterintuitive to me, because if it's pulling that much air, you wouldn't think any sewer gas would come up.
Well, it's probably just because the air gets too dry in the buildings, because they're, you know, both, both the buildings they're connected to actually have backflow valves, so they're, it's not gonna draft, it can't really pull that much air.
Okay.
Those things will prevent that, so.
So the backflow valves are designed to stop both air pushing and pulling?
Right, it won't, it's, it, you can't pull it with, just with air, you can't necessarily hold, excuse me, open it, it's gotta be some liquid that actually pushes it, so.
Okay. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Thanks for taking time out and coming up, appreciate it.
See. I'll let you know. Okay. Then you might just give Kevin a call too.
I didn't get an applause.
He's probably the main.
Yeah, once you get that spell checked, you might.
All right, we're gonna go into, we're gonna go into in-house budget discussions now.
Okay.
You're welcome to stay, Betty, but you don't need to. I don't anticipate any motions or anything else. All right. I'd like to start with capital improvement sales tax.
Okay.
It's courthouse version.
Courthouse version, right here. It's the five year. It is under commissions, and then under commission budget.
It's down at the bottom, it's a spreadsheet that says.
It's always bottom.
Sales tax, five years.
Okay.
It's the very last one, I think.
Is that the most current?
Yes, it's up to date, that one, under commissions.
Okay, where are we starting?
We're just, I'm just gonna try to explain the fifteen percent courthouse part.
Okay.
Basically, if you look in column D, that's where we are as of now, I'm sorry, that's where we budgeted. Column E is where we are as of the end of Nov- at the end of November, which projects have been paid. Then if you look at F, it's still what's pending out there to be paid.
Okay.
At the end of F, let's see, the red, in red there, seventy-two, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is what we should have left. And if you follow that all the way back up to column G for two thousand and fourteen, plus what we anticipate again being flat for next year, we'll have one point three million. That one right there. And then I only plugged in the administrative fee that will have to come out, so again, we'll still have one point three four.
Let me ask a question real quick, Debbie. Look at the line that says Old Jail Sallyport. So we, we put, no, you went too far down, it's a yellow line, right there, isn't it? I can't read, uh, no, keep going down, right there.
Mm-hmm.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We actually paid the majority of that out of, we did pay the majority of that out of.
Why did we do that?
Why did we do that?
When we put this in sales tax?
Why did we put it in sales tax when we started? I guess we didn't think about the bond proceeds money that we'd have left out of there.
So we're done with the, but that would be Old Jail Sallyport, kind of the office stuff we're doing down on the main floor and moving people around is kind of a component of that same project, trying to get the courts, getting a more secure upper facility. Does that make sense?
Doesn't make sense really to me. I mean, I don't see it as the same project, but.
Okay. I mean, we're done with that project.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, that was just in the brochure. And of course, we transferred over a million, some of Mark's capital sales tax money to pay for part of that law enforcement center. So you actually paid your.
It would seem to me that that line probably ought to go into, what's the top one called? Facility modification improvement, because that's, it's almost like a subcategory of facility modification improvement.
And I can, I was just going on with the brochure.
I would suggest we make that change, and the reason I suggest that is, as long as it sits out there saying Old Jail Sallyport, somebody's gonna look at it, either us or somebody else, and say, hey, that's free money. Why don't you buy me a tank?
You can do it.
Just moving it up there, just so that there's.
Yeah.
Because you still got.
Take the, yeah, there you go, perfect. And it doesn't change the bottom line at all, it just allocates it to a different line. And then, walk me through on one thing here real quick. So we've spent, out of the one point seven five million, well, now it's two point one million, right? Yeah. Out of the two point one million, we've allocated for facility modification, maintenance improvements. This shows that we've already spent nine hundred thousand, is that right?
Now that I've upped that, it's one point four, but yes, it would've been nine. I added that other three hundred and fifty thousand back in there now. Does that make sense?
No, I'm, go down, right, nope, no, you went too far. Line forty-one.
Okay.
Says nine hundred and thirteen thousand.
That is.
That's what we've already spent out of this fund?
No, that's what was budgeted. What we spent is the six twenty-two.
So we still have three hundred thousand that we haven't spent.
Yes, plus the extra.
And that's effectively the contingency.
Yes.
Okay.
And a.
So now we've got six hundred and twenty-two thousand. So you should have about, would you say one point four million?
Yes.
To get us through the next four years.
Yes.
No.
Did it change yours on Mac? They wanna change mine? You'll probably have to go out of it and come back in.
No, we got one point four million for two thousand and fourteen that we could spend, unless you're gonna leave some contingency out of that. But then in fifteen, you got another seven hundred and eighty thousand that you're gonna get from sales tax, right?
Now, what I, what I've done where there with the M is basically the two point one million that we.
No, it doesn't update.
It doesn't update.
I went out.
Oh, maybe I gotta save mine.
I went all the way out and gave them all the way back in.
All right. Why don't you try again now that I've saved mine? Maybe I need to close.
Let me try.
We'd have to reopen it after you save it. You shouldn't have to close it, you just save it, then we can open it back up. I don't think it's gonna do it live. We should have a system that would bridge it, so it would.
There, now, it's updated now.
Collector and assessor's idea.
So what you're saying is, we've got five hundred and seventy-five thousand left over from this year, and you anticipate seven hundred and eighty thousand coming in?
Yes.
And our annual is seven hundred and eighty thousand?
Yes, fifteen percent remaining flat for the next year. I mean, it, give or take a little, you know, I say we're gonna have what, we're gonna have a little over that. I'm estimating seventy-five thousand for this last check. You add that to the seven hundred and thirty thousand.
Is this year three?
Right.
No.
Yes, we're going into year three. That's where I was off, yeah, okay.
I understand that. We're right in the middle of it.
I was all confused, man.
You confused me there for a minute.
Okay.
We're going into.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Okay.
Okay, so we're into year three.
We're into year three.
So we anticipate that on facilities modification, we should have two point one million to spend. We've spent six hundred thousand, that leaves us with a buck and a half, give or take.
Carrie meeting today?
Um, you're gonna have it out there with Larry Benson and them.
We have y'all tested before y'all get hired for that, right?
Let's you guys get back to.
Oh, y'all are like the mental health department. Mental health department's a whole different thing.
So effectively, what we're talking about is, we should have five hundred thousand dollars a year, give or take, that we can afford to spend on capital improvements inside the courthouse, the complexes.
That's right.
And still, and you know, not zero out our accounts.
Right.
Okay.
And then.
And the same on all the other ones.
Same way with computer, we put a million, we've spent a hundred and fifty plus ten more, so we'll have about eight hundred thousand left. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Capital improve, capital equipment, vehicle replacement, you see, we're, whatever, we're seventy-two thousand, I guess. We got hit hard because we had the sheriff's vehicles in there that first year.
I think I'm kinda lost here, but basically, we had, for the first two years, for twelve and thirteen, we had one point five million, just rounding numbers, and what did we spend? Two hundred, or? What did, what did we spend? I'm trying to find where our total, nine hundred and thirteen is what we spent?
And are you on the capital part?
That's just on the.
On the buildings, we budgeted nine hundred and thirteen.
Right.
But we only, oh, couple of it, we budgeted nine hundred and thirteen.
Okay.
We only spent, that's not right.
So far?
Two twenty-three.
I'll just reopen this a second.
I got different numbers than you did. Get out of that, get out of that.
Did you go into the commission?
I think you went to the Jeff Helscher side.
Oh, you're in on.
No, no.
Yep. You're on the wrong side, X out of that. Go back to where, go up, go back.
I'm in commission's budget.
Go back in. Okay, click commission's budget, and go all the way to the bottom.
Oh, so not that one?
Right there. Nope, right there.
That would explain.
You know, this technology thing's great, Debbie.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. We're.
Okay, see, we've spent this, I anticipate spending some more of this, we'll have one point four left as of the five year.
Two thousand and twelve, oh, one point five left out of the five year?
For the next three years to go.
Sweet.
So in the first two years, we've spent three years' worth of revenue.
No. First two years, we have two point one million total for the buildings.
For five years?
For five years.
I thought we was getting seven hundred and fifty a year for it.
We get three point nine million total for everything, computerization buildings, vehicles and equipment, everything.
Okay.
You're just looking at the building subsection.
I'm not looking, I'm looking at total.
That's down at the bottom.
Okay. So how are we, are we behind or ahead on the spending, I guess, is what I'm.
We're, we're doing better than, if you divided it all in ha- into fifths, we're ahead, we're doing better.
Okay.
We have more money to spend the last three years than, that's the best, yes.
We've got carry forward.
Significant carry forward.
Okay.
We basically didn't spend anything in two thousand and twelve, because obviously we're waiting for the pot to grow, because some of these projects were kind of expensive. So basically, we are going to go into two thousand and fourteen with only five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of a carry forward.
Cash.
Cash.
That's a lot, though.
Yeah, plus our seven.
Theoretically, we should have, what do we budget for total contingency in this thing? Do you remember? Five hundred thousand? Theoretically, we should only have two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that. I was just trying to figure out where we were at, because we were jumping around between buildings, computers and stuff, and I was getting confused.
Explain to me where this two point one million comes in, I just don't, I don't see that.
Okay, so, so we have, the total, the fifteen percent is three point nine million.
Right.
Okay? When we did the three point nine million, we broke it into some categories.
Okay.
We said we were gonna do courthouse improvements, maintenance, et cetera.
Okay.
We said we were gonna do computerization.
Okay.
We said that jail Sallyport.
Okay.
And then we said vehicles, and, and then we final, and the last thing was contingency.
Okay.
One point seven five million is what we had for facilities modification.
Okay.
And three fifty's what we had for Old Sallyport. We just moved the three fifty up into the building. So it's a total of two point one million now.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So the total that we had is three point nine? So, the total that we're in is three point nine?
Right, that's what we anticipate.
Yeah, our part, and that's the fifteen percent. And then Rob and Bridget's got the other budget in there.
That's the eighty-five fifteen split. And generally, the way we've always done this, and I've only been up here through two cycles, the generally, the way we do it is, you know, obviously, we don't try to spend it all out every year.
Right.
Having some carryover does help. Um, but as we get farther into the tax, we're able to look and see where we're spending money. Do we need to add, allocate? For example, you know, right now, we've got a million plugged in for computerization. We've hardly spent any of it.
Right.
This might be a year to spend, and because I think we've talked about doing the upgrade on New World. So there'll be a big chunk out of it. That will then, you know, next year, we'll be sitting there going, wow, we spent most of our computerization money.
Right.
But this is traditionally, this year is the year, I guess, in which you start really looking at now, where we're gonna actually start spending the money on because now we've accumulated enough and we've addressed, started spending it that we can start looking at long-term planning a little better.
So what happens, I mean, do we have to spend a million dollars on computerization?
No. No.
Okay.
And we've never, and we've never held that as a sacred bond, that those internal allocations are what they are. The only one, the only one that is the sacred bond is that one.
Okay.
And that's because that's the cooperative project with, with the city, and we say, they gotta put up half, and we gotta put up half, and we've agreed, we won't rob those two funds. And the other, and the other sacred bond is the eighty-five fifteen, that we won't, we won't move road money into courthouse. So the eighty-five fifteen, we won't break either.
Okay. But now, didn't the, the city wanna reallocate some of their funds for?
So they've taken the MSP money. So they've taken the MSP money, um, and instead of putting it into MSP roads, they're putting it into MSP buildings.
Right.
And then we're taking a match, the same matching effective amount, and looking at, instead of putting it into MSP roads, into doing the enhancements on the entryway of MSP, which is Lafayette Street, et cetera. I had a good meeting on that, Jackson. We're gonna, um, try to move that forward a little bit farther. The, we talked to MoDOT, and they're gonna, they think they can come up with some matching money.
Well, that's what they were mentioning. I was hoping could be, that'll make it a lot more enticing and be able to.
By, by the end of this week, maybe early next week, we might, we might be able to actually see what kind of cash is out there, maybe be able to grab it.
They were talking to, Roger was gonna talk to him too. He's still got some good contacts out there, so that'll be.
I mean, are we looking to maybe make the overpass concrete look like stone, and then possibly maybe some decorative railings over it?
Yeah, some lighting.
Something like up on seventy-one in Kansas City or something?
Yeah, some lighting, probably. Kind of a happy medium, not the most prettiest thing that's gonna draw attention to you, but it's gonna be something to dress it up and, you know, that.
Something that graffiti.
Cleaning the rock cut up, cleaning the rock cut up so that it doesn't look like just an ugly rock cut. I mean, it's, they've got some draft stuff. The one thing that we asked, that we are gonna move forward, it'll come to us, is, um, MoDOT says we need more, a more definite number, and a little bit more definite plan than what we got now, which is one step above the back of the piece of paper.
But, very happy.
So, I've asked, I asked Bob Gilbert to get three, um.
Tiers of pricing or drawings?
Three names of landscape architects.
Okay.
That can actually do a more refined cost estimate on three tiers of price.
Well, that's what Bob's saying, you know, we gotta have the price, you know, do you work backwards or do you work forward? So how much money do we have? And MoDOT's saying, how much do you need?
We're, we're test, so here's what I told Bob is, I thought the way to do it was to have a two and a half million dollar enhancement, which is the assumption that we can pull more than fifty-fifty. We could get like a sixty-forty or a seventy-thirty draw. In other words, we put up the smaller amount and they pull down more. A two million dollar package, which would be a straight fifty-fifty draw, and then a one point two million dollar package, which is, we get nothing from anybody, and we have to do it all in-house because I think Lincoln will kick in some money. You know, we'd be able to pull up maybe another hundred or two hundred thousand from the community, which would be the stripped-down version. MoDOT was very favorably saying, if you have cash on the table, they'll find a way to match it. Then when I said, okay, I got a check right here, get out, I got cash on the table, can you match it? They suddenly said, well, we gotta look and see what kind of money is out there.
Backtracking, huh?
Yeah. They, they're not used to, um, they're not used to dealing with people like us that actually have cash in our bank account. They're used to dealing with people saying, well, you know, in four or five years, we'll have some money, and maybe you guys can upfront it. So, so anyway, that's what we're doing with that, and that's a joint agreement, the city and the county, that, you know, they asked us, is it okay if they repurpose? And we'd said okay, and then.
Mm-hmm, sure.
They're okay with us repurposing.
And is it, I mean, is it more of a landscape project, or is it just more of an architecture thing? Because it looks, seems like it's more structural stuff.
Apparently, it's a, from what I understand from talking to them, it's a landscape project that doesn't have anything to do with trees or bushes or shrubs.
You haven't seen the presentation at all? Bob hasn't gotten hold of you?
Bob Gilbert?
Well, I asked him to so that you knew what was going on with it. I didn't mean to blindside you with it.
We'll, uh, I'll call him when we take a break.
Him and Randy, I said, and I said, get one of us at a time, that way they don't have to have.
Yeah, no, I haven't.
And I said, I don't want it being just a.
I mean, I just, I don't really care. I mean, it's, it's a beautification project, and maybe, and maybe that's a, a landscape area, but it's out, out of the normal realm of a landscape architect.
Apparently, according to Gilbert, the people who do that kind of decorative stuff.
Kevin? Congratulations.
They fall in the category as a landscape architect.
Big daddy.
Congratulations, Kevin.
Thank you.
Which are probably, they're probably not working with any architect on that bridge type stuff, anyway.
Well, Bob said he's got people that helps him out with that stuff, but I don't know if he can get numbers that we need.
We're gonna need to enter into a contract with somebody. He's supposed to get us three names and three proposals, and I told him, if anything comes spiral bound with glossy pictures, I'm not, I'm rejecting that proposal.
And is MoDOT gonna be the one that we just write a check to them and they handle the project the whole way through? And I think that's probably the most favorable.
Ultimately, that's the way, if, if we mark on it, that's the way it'll be done, is MoDOT will actually contract it out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as part of the agreement, we will be able to specify what we want. Um, if there are logos or images, we actually, that's actually a separate addendum that goes in with a picture of the logo.
And that's gonna be a different thing, too, because we're trying to do the, the wayward thing, and we got something going through Campbell.
That's something different. That's different. The wayfinding's different than this. That's different than this.
But if you're gonna put signs up there like that, that should be part of the wayfinding thing, contributing to that, and that's gonna be some Campbell.
These aren't gonna be, the, the beautification concept is not putting up signs saying, go this way to MSP. That's the wayfinding. This is, hey, we actually don't have just a ugly metal bridge.
But, the, right, this is gonna be the rails and, um, rocks and stuff, but if they wanna put wayfinding signs up there and stuff, they need to know now that we plan to do that.
And that's going a separate path, and apparently they're down the path on wayfinding, I understand all that stuff.
There, yeah, that's.
I've not been involved in the wayfinding discussions.
You wanna be back on Campbell?
No.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Actually, I'm kind of enjoying it.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm learning a hell of a lot more about than I knew before.
He's the chairman of everything. I just, I might have to start asking him for more stuff, because he just can't obviously say no.
I'm telling you.
I'm pretty good at saying no.
I am too.
Finally have to.
Alright, so, I mean, I would suggest we start working our way through these various items and issues here.
Sure.
And it seems to me, the first one, it seems, assuming we're all in agreement on it, it's a real easy one, which is, are we all in agreement, we're gonna upgrade the computer system?
Oh, so you're not down at the bottom looking at the list?
Well, it, it, computerization kind of sits as its, you know, it's its own little item, and that would be the one big issue. It's sitting there in red on line forty-eight.
That's fine. Yeah, I'm, let's, let's get that done. That's where I'm at.
Okay with that?
Yeah, I think.
I mean, that's why we put the money in, so, alright.
I'm not knowing how much. Can I put three hundred thousand?
Put three hundred thousand in, it's a good placeholder.
Where, where were we at on that?
We are, ooh, three million? I can get it for that. No.
I hope you get a kickback.
You don't understand, if it's three million, you won't be here to work on it.
No, uh, I'm try, we're trying to work on the RFP. We slowed down because of Christian being off. We have a, basically, a pretty good RFP together now. We're just gonna critique it a little bit more and then put it out.
Okay.
When she gets back next week.
Is it gonna be as much of a mess as the assessor and collectors?
And the health department?
That's why I was hoping to keep the same system, because I know what it can do. I, I just believe the Windows version of it will do a lot more. So, but we'll have to bid it. We've already decided that, so we'll just have to see when they come back.
So we're gonna go to a Windows version of.
New World.
That?
Of AF, or what?
What's currently on AS four hundred, we go onto servers, yeah.
Way off on my letters. And you think we can do that for three hundred?
Well, their bid to us was two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
To just move it. That wasn't a bid. It was basically to upgrade to their Windows, but we decided that is a different platform, that is a change, so we are gonna have to go out to bid.
That's fine. That's, when you had that number, I just wanted to make sure that it was gonna cover, because computers just, it's, there's absorbent costs in there, and that's why I was wondering if three hundred thousand would cover it, so.
Absorbent, good word.
Don't be surprised when the bids come back at a close to a million. I'm not kidding.
So I'm, now that we've discussed that one partic, one particular issue, let's drop down to line seventy-eight, which is where you were at, which is the list. And is there anything on that list that you guys see that we ought to strike out, or that we, we should discuss more substantially in depth? I mean, it's still well under.
The bottom level, right?
Yes. That's Marilyn and Eric.
I just really don't wanna spend a hundred grand on that. Surely, it's not gonna cost that much, but, or, is that, is that just the first floor? That's not doing anything with Marilyn's?
I don't think it's gonna cost that much. I think that's just a number we put in there, because we didn't know. We were talking about moving a lot more people down there and doing it a whole different way.
We're moving five people downstairs.
Isn't that right? Six. Was Marilyn have four people?
Yeah, and to do that office down there, actually, I was talking to Jennifer about that yesterday, because they're getting ready to, I guess, try to put that bid out for doing the work down there, and she said to do the demolition.
Well, that's what I'm gonna ask you, is what we were talking about doing in the stages, and our first stage over there was to check out the mold and get that.
And they're gonna clean that out.
And we're done with that? Well, we're working on that. Once they're done, what is your next stage?
The next step is just to get in there and design the space out, which doesn't, as I recall from our walkthroughs down there, doesn't require a huge amount of work. Spaces, it needs to be cleaned up.
Right.
But the space itself is almost laid out in its normal format. I think the one.
Couple of walls you adding, a door or two here and there.
Wall and a door, and, and the bathroom might have to be.
I'm gonna have to hire Jeff to do that.
That's conflict.
He can bid it.
Prevailing wage?
You can bid it.
I'll do it for prevailing wage. Hell, yeah, I'll do a lot of things for prevailing wage.
I'll hear a little bidder.
Ah, dang.
I, I think a hundred thousand is way beyond what the cost is gonna be, but I'd rather just plug it in and take it out.
That's fine.
And then if we, if it's forty thousand.
You know, it's just sixty thousand.
Are we gonna hire an architect to design something, or?
I think we're talking about pretty minimal stuff.
I think we should do a design-build.
I agree.
And I'd have Marilyn come down here. It's hard to get straight answers a lot of times from her, because I don't know if she knows exactly what she wants, but we can make sure that it's gonna work for her office. Either that or we make it as a, just kind of a global office that'll work if we move anybody down there.
For that design?
No, I thought I had it here.
Then we also need to build a hallway there for the computer stuff.
So, so there's three, there's kinda, excuse me, three separate stages to that project, but they're all kind of interrelated.
Mm-hmm.
It's Marilyn's office, Eric's and office right across the hall, and then the hallway through IS.
Mm-hmm, okay.
That's kind of the three stages. They're all kind of related because you kind of have to have all of them. But Marilyn's, you know, stage-wise, Marilyn's is really easy to do.
Are we doing anything with bathrooms?
We need to do the bathroom with two Marilyn's, I think, since it's on that same side.
And there is an extra, well, there's a bathroom in Marilyn's office, too.
Mm-hmm.
Well, then maybe redesign that.
So.
Maybe make a public access to one of those bathrooms.
That bathroom area is probably gonna be the most expensive part of the whole thing.
There's a breaker box on that wall, too.
Maybe we make them a unisex bathroom or something.
Yeah, kinda like we did on.
Yeah, handicap accessible or something.
Well, it is now. The one for the public is both unisex, but then I guess there's just a little one in Marilyn's office that you can't.
It's a great big one.
Oh, it is?
It's freaking huge.
Well, then I say we make that all, all public. They don't.
You guys see how that layout is first.
So.
Okay.
Do we need, do we, what do you think? Do we need an architect for that?
I'd say we sit down with Greg one day and draw it up, and whoever's gonna be overseeing and stuff.
Okay.
And let's draw it up and come up with ideas we have, and then say, Marilyn, here's what we plan on doing. Are you okay with this? And Eric, and.
Alright.
I think we just put.
We're not talking about taking out any walls. We're just talking about maybe adding some.
I'd say adding, maybe a door.
We may have to cut a doorway in to. If we're gonna make those, the bathrooms that are in Marilyn's office, if we're gonna have to make those open up, there'll have to be a door cut in.
Well, how about you, Greg, get together, and let's just do phase one, and Marilyn in the bathroom next, is that okay? On that side.
Well, we need to get that done, and we need the hallway through IS. Those, really, those two have to be done at the same time.
I think drawing it all up at one time, and then we can do it in phases if we need to, so we just.
Eric's, Eric's part's easy. I mean, it's really easy what he, because he's already, the office space is effectively already back there. It really doesn't require much of any construction.
I mean, really, can't we just do a couple bigger rooms and get some of them like cubbies with dividers and stuff?
That's what we were gonna do from, so for Marilyn.
Yep.
The concept for Marilyn was, we're gonna put a, there's an archway there, we're gonna put a door in so she can have an office where she needs to meet with people in private, she can shut the door. The whole rest of that space is just gonna be cubbies, desk.
Right, right.
Like, right here's the entryway, and there, there's an arch, so there needs to be a door so she can close it, have her office. And then in here, I kinda saw, and that's what I think we were talking about, if she wants, we can put dividers up and she can make. There's a door here that goes back to the bathroom.
Same way with Eric and Penny, canna be.
In fact, actually, I think Eric's and Penny may even be easier than that.
Yeah, because there's an office there already, and he may be able to put her just.
I think he was gonna put her in the glass office. And then him back in what's the bigger office.
Yeah, that used to be where they stored a bunch of stuff.
Is that a, is that carpet down there, or is it tile, or?
It was carpet. It was carpet when we were in.
Eric's is the cheapest part, because really, it's more cleaning stuff out than doing any kind of construction. Marilyn's is the next cheapest, because it's really just that archway door that needs to be put in after we remediate, and fortunately, that's not too expensive. The hallway with Dale's can be the most difficult part.
If we can get.
Because it lays out.
Who's doing the judge's office? What tells his name again?
Kaufman.
Kaufman. Kaufman's been really good to us. I think he's been doing a good job, and really reasonably priced, I think we can get this done for well under a hundred. Unless we decide to put diamond door honds or something in there.
What about, where are we gonna put maintenance, and where are we gonna put circuit? Are you envisioning circuits staying there with all their files?
We're not moving them.
Well, they're, they're taking over.
They got almost nothing down there. I was down there.
Their files?
They're using the glass off, they're using the glass office, and that's it, effectively. They've got a few files back in that storage area.
Right about that.
And the maintenance, to me, what, where you're putting Eric is in maintenance, is right?
Which was never designed to be maintenance. It just kinda got taken over. Maintenance was never over there.
Whenever it emptied out, Dale kinda took it over.
So where's Greg going?
Right, we gotta put him somewhere.
He can go back over to Carnegie if we have to. We could put him up in the attic where IT used to be.
I'm not having a worker's.
He could use.
We're not.
Well, he'd use the extra.
Alright, not that, don't get there.
So what about the Carnegie building in the bottom?
That's why I use the steps.
Not at that little office.
We should be up there.
At that Carnegie, I know.
Carnegie?
Carnegie building in the bottom.
Where his old office used to be.
No, that's a box.
In the, the room that the assessor used to use for storage a long time ago.
Down below?
Can he go to where Melissa used to be?
No, that's upstairs in the assessor's office.
Well, it's in the back.
Yeah, but.
I don't think it'll be a problem finding a place for him.
Okay, well, I'm, okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't, you know.
I mean, okay, so.
So what about Circuit Clerk? So let's go through the rest of this list.
Why are we paying for Circuit Clerk?
Yeah, I thought, we talked about, I thought she only asked for like four thousand or five thousand dollars.
She did, but then she is wanting to come over tomorrow if you guys want to, or she would like the judge to come over.
Tomorrow is becoming a really bad day for me.
Oh.
And I'm not adding anything more than's already on the agenda tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I can't do it. I'd be hard-pressed to be able to.
Tom, you gotta be out here.
I probably could get out by eleven. And we've added the bail bonds discussion, we're doing law enforcement. There's something else on there, too. I mean, there's.
A few of my little things.
It just continues to grow.
Well, that's fine, the twelfth, can you do eight-thirty in the morning to meet with the judge? Change that agenda to start at eight-thirty. She'd like to talk to you about two things, basically the record stuff, and to put the part-timers back in, and then also, um, this court and bank, their computer.
What's the closed session contract negotiations that I approved to put on there?
Yeah, I was about to ask you that.
That's the health department, um, software discussion.
Okay, I was like, oh.
Yeah, I meant to, I saw that pop up, and I meant to ask you what that was.
Yeah, so, yeah, that was for.
Okay.
You had said the last time, try to get that together.
See, that's just becoming a big, that's tomorrow, no, tomorrow. That's just, that agenda's, that agenda's getting big.
That shouldn't take too long, we're going to do it.
Yeah.
Alright, so, yeah, I wanna have a discussion on those computers, because I know that I'm gonna pay for it.
Do you want me to just take it out? You want me to reduce it to five, and then let it go?
Well, I thought we were gonna talk to the courts about their fund.
Right, and that's what she wants to do on the twelfth.
That's fine. You can leave it in there, but we, I'd put an asterisk by it, that we're gonna have a discussion about that.
I think that's a fair statement.
And will tw, will eight-thirty on the twelfth be okay?
It's fine by me.
Just tell me when it'll be here.
Okay. Change this. Alright, so we'll put a big asterisk by that.
Oh, we already had session that day, anyway.
Right.
Right.
So you're just gonna start earlier?
Yes.
So what's Court Services microphones?
That was a request that was made from, I mean, I couldn't pull it up. Can I ask Kristen to send me that budget again and? She, she has to do it, so some microphones, twenty-four hundred dollars. That would be a John Riley. I can ask about that too.
Yeah.
I just called him about something. And again, just-
I'm okay with leaving a lot of these in here and I'm just speaking for myself, but I think we have to almost look at some of Greg Camp's list. And see what are those priorities and then, then some of these others may have to wait.
Well, in the number eighty-three, line eighty-three, it's one eighty-nine, but plus closing. I didn't know what that would be, so.
I wanna-
Yeah.
Okay, county clerk, new copier, did we already get that?
No.
There's a two thousand and ten, I believe, over there on surplus. Does he just need a copying machine? Or what are we getting for forty-four hundred dollars? I mean, that's nickel and diamond on, at that point, but, you know, I looked at that copier over there and it's, geez. It's bigger than one of my bedrooms or my office and I'd probably use it.
Oh, the one that's on surplus?
Yeah.
That one's pretty nice too compared to the one we have, so I'm not sure.
Oh, so they already got it?
No, no, the ones that they, the one that they're replacing. This would be replacing one that they already have. And to me, theirs is nicer than what we have, but. It's not circuit, it's county.
Okay, I guess I'm understanding why we're replacing it then. Maybe we just need to talk to him before we do that and figure out, okay. Property, that's about, you got that pretty much, water line in sheriff department. Oh, that was the fix.
And that may get paid this year. I do have it in this year's too.
That's fine. I'm just looking at this, these are just-
Yeah, and maybe, maybe I don't have enough money in there either for the camera system and the door security. But I know Donnie was gonna come up with some of his own money out of different sources and that thing is, we're in the middle of the RFP if Donnie and the judge would approve it.
So where are we at with, uh?
I need my phone card real quick. Excuse me. I'll be right back. Let's just take a two or three minute break here. You, you gotta start it on this.
Well, we had to get to it anyway. Ah, my goodness!
I'm gonna go look and see what year that is.
I'm sure glad it wasn't got me a laptop. I'll tell you what, that's so nice to have at home and not to be tracking this one around.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It wasn't that much, just five fifty.
Yeah.
It was on sale too. I was talking to the kid there and I was like, I don't know shit about, here, here's what I got.
Did you get one of those Windows eight ones or? My mom got one of those and it didn't have Word or Excel or any of that shit on there.
Probably have to get that taken off.
Yeah, and it's, it, it is so different just trying to navigate through that shit.
I go to my desktop and pretty much do it.
Yeah, yeah. Once, once you get there, it ain't bad.
Yeah, I just, I'm the same way, man. I like, uh, maybe I'll get used to it.
Oh, I'm sure. Probably a lot like a Windows smartphone. Oh, I made a copy. That's fine. Thanks. I've got one of those somewhere. Hello? Yeah? I haven't yet, no. I'm up at the commission.
Nice to cool off.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, you ought to be able to do some of that stuff, I think.
Uh, some rejuvenating drink, something or another. Supposed to have some vitamins and stuff in it. It was about two million grams of caffeine in it. I woke up at four thirty, I can't get back asleep. I was like, shit, wide awake. Might as well get up now.
I know.
I don't do it at four thirty all the time. A lot of times I can wake up at four thirty, go use the boys room and come back and be right back asleep.
Yeah, I'll get it done.
Isn't that sad? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I'm like, really? Am I getting older when I have to go? Why can't I just sleep till I'm-
I, that's what I say.
Any of you guys involved in the Legion anymore?
I got it in the newsletter.
I'm trying to think of who asked me about tryouts for Legion now.
Oh, for baseball? No, I, I, we're older than that now finally.
Yeah, mine, mine too.
Enjoyed it a couple of years, but I didn't like the way it was set up.
You didn't?
No.
It works at home a lot and the rec league did, that's for sure.
I think y'all better bring your own team in there instead of having these tryouts, which really meant nothing anyway. If y'all are gonna do that, just play rec league and let everybody play.
Do we have a maximum one to eleven on our dental?
What is that, do you know?
Thousand.
Thousand. Get to a thousand bucks pretty quick on dental.
Even on orthodontist, they're not dumb. It's a thousand too. That's lifetime on orthodontist.
A thousand, lifetime? Oh, wow.
Orthodontist.
Siri is awesome.
Isn't it nice?
Oh, man, you should, I can't tell you what I ask her sometimes. It's great.
You don't mess with it, do you?
I do. Siri, do you have a boyfriend?
I have you.
Did you plug that into that or what? I didn't think she'd say that.
Siri, oops. Siri, how much do you weigh?
That's a pretty heavy question. Jeff.
I'll say you put that on.
The last time she said, it depends on the planet. You don't wanna hear the other ones. Well, we're bowling and you have a few drinks. It's amazing what you'll ask her. What? They're more personal questions. It's a long ways from St. Thomas to Wardsville, so you have to have something to-
Well, you better not be texting and talking about that thing and driving.
I'm riding. I don't drive to bowling. They pick me up, we'll go. Once in a while, we stop on a bridge where we gotta drop off a bowling ball. That's only if somebody had a really bad night. You would not believe how many bowling balls there probably are at the bottom of that river right there off the St. Thomas Bridge.
Oh.
It's amazing how high they'll bounce too.
I think it's a little loud. The lady who does-
Sorry about that, guys.
That's alright.
It's alright. Don't let that happen again.
Pitching practice, we go up there. Okay.
What were we up to?
You know, all this is just a placeholder of a dollar amount, so I mean, you don't really have to decide today, but if you want to, we can continue going.
Some of it we should probably knock out. I mean, for example, obviously the purchase of the property at Public Works, we need to knock out. We're gonna, we've already committed to that. It's just a question when the dollars flow. What about the computer systems? You know, that's one of the upgrade things we've always been trying to do. I'm not sure what that entails.
The Dale's list?
Yeah.
Basically, I, I could pull that list up for you. The big thing is about thirty-some thousand of it is, um, migrating from the two thousand and seven Windows, am I right, to two thousand and thirteen, but let me get that up here.
I just thought of something last night. Well, I was thinking the HBA Christmas party, y'all invited to that.
Yeah.
Well, then I was thinking last night.
Yep, I told him.
What's that?
County Commissioner Mark Ellinger, Jeff Housher, and Chris Wrigley. I was like, oh, I'm sitting down, I'm gonna- My wi-, my wife went like this, she went.
I couldn't see you exa-, I could see your wife, I couldn't see you, cause I'm pretty sure we both probably had the same face. Whoa. How long?
Wow, I can't believe they did that. They just totally-
Yeah, upgrading office, I'm sorry, not when, office from the two thousand and seven to the two thousand and thirteen and assuming a hundred users, Dale had said, it, there's thirty-four thousand of that seventy-one thousand.
Why? Why?
Well, eventually, we're gonna have to keep up at some point. You know what I mean?
But doing it all at once?
Well, it's a lot easier for the guy who's helping the applications and the, and the software to be, pretty soon, some of the software's gonna make us upgrade, you know, so, I mean, it-
What about the phone paging upgrade to cover the courthouse?
That, I, that I don't say we're gonna do. That is that, um, overhead paging that we're gonna do through the phones that you guys told me to put off till next year. So, that again's gonna come to you before it ever gets to be approved. I mean, we can swipe it if you want. I don't think it's gonna work like I, I wanted it to work, cause you're gonna have to be standing next to a phone to even hear it, so Joe Public's not gonna be able to-
I gotta start bringing a calculator with me.
Here all employees be running out, but then Joe Public's gonna be standing there, cause they're not next to a phone to hear it.
Alright, so we-
There's something that happens this places. It'll get around plenty quick.
So a hundred, Dale's talking a hundred users to, to move from seven to thirteen, thirty-four thousand dollars, that's three hundred and forty dollars a unit. Why don't we just buy the computers?
It's almost the same price.
I think you pay, you pay for that too. This is office, it's not Windows. So you pay for, if Dale buys new computers, he's-
Pay on top of it to get office?
Oh, yeah. I know when I go out to buy a new computer, it's gonna cost me another two, three hundred dollars just to get office on it.
Really?
They don't, it doesn't come with it anymore?
No, a lot of them don't. Laptop didn't come with it either. I gotta get it off my hard, uh, or my desktop and it's, it's gonna be Office seven, I guess, too.
The problem is that and there's so many-
That's about all I know.
Copies and, you know, like, sure, Dale can put that same one in yours and yours and yours. Now, if we get caught, we don't have licenses for all those. There's very steep penalties.
Right.
Well, if we put it, if we take out the paging system and we put it in.
Yep.
That will put us, assuming your software costs three hundred thousand. It's a placeholder. That puts us at five, five hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty-three cents out of a million on computerization, which is slightly less than sixty percent. Fifty-two percent. And at the end of the third year, we ought to be at sixty percent theoretically, so it's not out of line for what we budgeted.
We gotta pay for our computers for the assessor too?
No, we don't.
No, that comes out of his fund.
Okay.
We're used to.
But I thought that was in Dale's, wasn't it in Dale's figure there?
Let's see if he had anything in this this time. Oh, he does have six in there. Assessment fund, I wrote.
Oh, yeah, assessment fund.
But is it, was it in the total?
Yeah, it is in the total. So fifty-five.
So, I mean, we're still well underneath our budget point on computerization and-
Again, you know how the budget works. It's just an estimate.
I mean, I, I guess I understand if you're gonna upgrade the software, you might as well do it all in one shot instead of doing it piecemeal. We tried, my law office tried the piecemeal thing and it-
Didn't work so well.
Well, yeah, I mean, you got half the people working on one system, half people working on the other, and you start shipping documents and the next thing you know, somebody's going, hey, I can't open this. I'm, I'm fine with the fifty-six thousand for computers. You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. I mean, it's, it's a hard pill, pill to swallow, but it's-
What was the water line in the sheriff's department?
I have it both. That was the thing that you guys have already approved, um, brackets or something. I do have it in this year too, but I just didn't know when the bill would come to be paid.
Okay.
So it's, it's already in the budget, but we just don't know where it's gonna flow out at, right?
So probably next year.
I guess.
Maybe this year.
I mean, we only have one more bill run, so, and I've not seen anything yet.
Um, I don't know. What do you think about juvenile detention capital?
And I listed it all below there, so you can, you can choose if you want.
Well, the sofas and the dryer, I'm okay with. The plastic chairs, three thousand dollars. I mean, probably got something over in surplus that they could probably take.
I'm okay with the table tennis and the metal detector.
Yeah.
That's fine. I have a hard time with that twenty-eight hundred dollars for a storage shed.
Yeah, I think we can pick something up at Lowe's for that or for probably a thousand bucks.
Don't you think, Jeff?
I'm just gonna put it together.
Well, don't the ones from Lowe's, the ones that deliver them, already built?
For a thousand.
Oh, I think they do. I think they come already built.
They'll come in a box with a bunch of pieces of sheet metal and a bunch of brackets that you gotta put your skeleton together and then-
What about that place out on fifty-four south there that has them already built?
They probably built them on site.
Haul my trailer.
Well, the ones that you're talking about that are, you're gonna be able to haul, you're not gonna be able to get for twenty-eight hundred.
Oh, really?
More than that?
So it's twenty-eight hundred a? I mean, I, I'm, I think of the ones out at Lowe's, they have the big signs in the parking lot saying it's like eight hundred bucks for a-
That's, that's not assembled though. You'll, you'll spend a good half day to the day, and that's on a small one, cause we built one at rental we had and it was, we bought a five or six hundred dollar setup.
I'm, I'm okay with leaving the money in for it, but with respect to the chairs and the shed, I want that stuff to come to us before we go forward on it. Sofas, the dryer, the table tennis, metal detector, load them, go ahead and get them, but those other two, I wanna come here and have a more substantive discussion before I actually pull the trigger.
Yeah, the, the chairs out there, one too. How many for three thousand dollars? You also gotta get some of the-
I guess some is durable, but, yeah.
Are they altered to the floor too?
We got, I mean, you can get some really nice chairs for fifty, sixty bucks.
That's what I was thinking, that's a lot of chairs.
And then, I, I guess I'd like to have more discussion on the storage shed, because I don't want to put some cheap-ass storage shed out back there either. I mean, I don't know what he's gonna put in it, but, I mean, maintenance is storing or probably taking a mower over there, or I don't, where do they?
They store it over there, and.
They do?
I know, that's what, it, what I heard was to put that flammable stuff in that little shed.
Inside right now?
Yeah, to take.
With the boiler and, with the heating, whatever those, whatever kind of room you call those, I have. That's where we were gonna put the generator, hook up on the backside and stuff, at that building.
You put something too cheap, somebody's gonna break in it and steal stuff out of it, so.
I agree, I'd like to have a more substantive discussion.
All right. Uh, we'll just kinda leave it in there, but again, mark those as commission approval. It is all your approval.
What's the camera system and door security?
Well, that's the RFP that we're starting waiting on the judge and Donnie to get back with us, you know, this is where we were gonna put in some money and.
Oh, this is the global system, that's right.
Yeah, Chris reminded me yesterday, I forgot all about it.
And that's our share, give or take?
I, I think Donnie's got, I don't think it's gonna be near that, I think it might be closer to fifteen, but we just wanted to put a number in there, so.
And just so you know, Donnie's really knocked down the doors, because all about just the cameras, but.
I'm fine with that. So, does that cover all the capital improvements requests?
Yes, and I, I did make a mistake yesterday, that law enforcement vehicles was in the one ninety-three that was already budgeted in the sheriff's. So, I don't know what we were talking about the other day when he was in here, but.
So, the sher- you and I talked, and so that money that he spent this year came out of his portion of the law enforcement sales tax?
Yes.
So, that's seven hundred and thirty-four thousand, give or take. I mean, it's a little less than that now that we've wiped some stuff off of it, right?
Seven eighteen.
Seven eighteen out of one point three million?
If you tell me to leave these other things in there, if you tell me to take.
Oh.
This is in question yet.
Yeah.
This, I'm gonna find out. Health Department, I forget what that was, what was that?
Where was it?
That was a fax machine, because they have to do the, just remember the secure faxing crap. It seemed like that was an awful expensive fax machine to me.
But if we don't do that software, that's in question then. But I was wrong, their copier is two thousand and seven, we have a two thousand and nine, so.
There's a two thousand and ten over there.
Can't do that out of election services? Can't use the slush fund? How much has he gotten in slush fund?
Not gonna be here.
Although, you know, we have kinda set, told everybody, don't use your slush fund for capital, we'll, that's our.
Oh, no, I've never said that on, on their slush funds.
Oh, that's right, we talked about, don't do it out of the other thing.
He's got sixty-four thousand.
I think he can afford a forty-four hundred dollar copier, don't you? All right, X that.
Tell him to pay the maintenance out of there, too.
And as far as the clerk's computer and the microphones, I guess we just have to sit on that till we have a meeting on the twelve, right?
Yes.
I'm okay with the facts, I think it's expensive, but.
I think we just put a number in there and.
We'll know more about that after tomorrow, too, won't we?
That's right, that's right.
Can we, can we try to get all departments that are gonna need fax machines and copiers and whatever, and bid it all at once?
Well, what I tried to do, bid it all at once, is what I tried to do with Jennifer when we ran into Circus copy machine issue, is we're gonna put out a flat one every year for a copy machine, be a color, be a regular, and then if anybody comes up needing one, they should just get on that contract for the year. At, but you can't control what, I mean, I guess if we're paying for it, we can't control whether they're gonna buy it. But their hodgepodge of what happened over there is because they use interest money, they use receivership money, they did have a problem. And Donnell's all on board of making it simplified.
Then we already did that.
We did.
Yeah.
But what we, Jennifer talked about was.
Because I got the phone call from K O P I about that.
Yeah.
Why are y'all getting that?
Yeah, she nailed me, too.
Yeah.
Really?
And see, you'll get that, even if we put one out for the year, you're gonna get that, too. It's gonna be nice.
I don't care that they called me, it's just why are you calling me after we awarded? Why don't you come up and we have bid openings, look at it and say, here's an issue you may want to look at before you.
Well, I think she didn't get it because their service was bad.
Sheriff called you?
Yeah, and it wasn't, I don't know if it was about the service part of it.
How much, how much do we actually need color copiers?
We don't have that many on here. I think the county collector has one, we use it if we have something we want a color copy. I think the sheriff has one. I think it's a nicety, you know.
Sheriff probably has fourteen of them.
Some of them have, the prosecutor has one, they have.
And they, and I will, I will attest that they probably would need it, because there are exhibits when you copy them, you have to copy them in color.
Now, I'm not sure if Circus got any in their collage or copiers they've got or.
Is it cheaper to have a color printer or a color copier, is this saving, that must have a color copier?
Depends who your salesperson, your son.
Oh, all right.
I, I'm not sure there's a marginal difference.
It's just the, the operation costs and the ink and stuff.
More expensive to have color.
Yeah, it's expensive to fill those.
I mean, you can buy a black and white copying machine, but if you have copies and it's on your computer, you can print, print it in color.
Probably my, my suggestion is, that's what we do, is we have a color copier slash printer. I mean, you can print in color, you can print in black and white, you can copy in color, you can copy in black and white, it's kind of a one-size-fits-all machine. It's got codes in it, it defaults to black and white, you actually have to override it to put, to print in color. But, you know, I mean, I probably, once a week, maybe, once every two weeks, I might print something in color.
I'll say the nice thing about that, copying is a week, can PDF scan anything?
Yeah.
It doesn't count against you, which is.
Scanning's key, man.
That, that's, it's a wonderful.
Love scanning.
Okay, so that leaves us with effectively the carryover. Carry forward, we really haven't changed that amount a whole lot. That gives us, let's say, ballpark, um, two, three hundred thousand dollars if we need to do internal building on Greg's list, which I think we'd kinda said maybe after, after we're done with the budget, we can sit down, parse through that list to figure out what we want to get done.
Well, he's got some big things here, and then below that, he's got some littler things, equipment stuff. Of course, the big things are gonna eat up the money pretty quick.
You know, I think if you stay away from the really big stuff, there's a lot of the stuff you can do and get a lot done for, say, two hundred thousand dollars, I think you'd get a lot done. When you consider you can do the HVAC controls here, I'm just looking at As.
Right.
Boiler and pumps in Carnegie, that's eighty. The sidewalks and the windows in the courthouse, it's one twenty. Replacement HVAC at Health, that's one forty-five. Juvenile's a killer, man, they, I'll tell you what.
Yeah, but most of that's, you know, heating and cooling.
And, you know, that right there, you pretty much covered all the As, with the exception of sealing the exterior Carnegie, and we at some point gotta have a discussion about Carnegie.
The new countertops and sinks in all the bathrooms at Health, I mean, are they that bad, or?
I think that's why that's a C.
Yeah, that's a way down the.
I think it's kind of a wish list thing there. We asked him to prioritize it. Some point it came up that.
And of course, didn't he say that the driveway needed to be replaced at Health?
I thought they got that.
He extended that, it was an A, and he made it a C now.
I thought they just sealed it again.
They did, and it bought them several more years.
Oh, they sealed Health?
Yes.
I thought they sealed Juvenile.
They had enough to do both.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And we just did Juvenile, too. I swear, we just did.
We looked, it was like three years ago.
So, there's two of them that are really kinda knocked down the list.
I didn't think you had to reseal that stuff that often.
Yeah, I would probably, my, my thought is, I would only really look at the As. I wouldn't look at anything that's on the A.
The sidewalks and handrails out in front of the courthouse, they are getting.
They need something done.
Pretty crappy.
That's an A.
I just think that, you know, when people come up, that's one of the, the things they see, that's your, you know, welcome to the county business, um, be careful so you don't cut yourself on our handrail.
The, you know, in the end, aside from the Carnegie building, the million dollars on that, which I'm not willing to even have that discussion.
Where did that number come from?
It actually came from the guys who, um.
Did this.
And they said a million bucks?
Cost us a hundred and fifty thousand to do this huge courthouse, and they want a million for the.
I thought, I thought Greg said it was a hundred thousand.
No, that's supposed to be a hundred thousand. That's a hundred thousand.
That says a million to me, man.
This here says a hundred thousand. It ain't gonna be no million.
Debbie?
One too many zeros, Deb.
Y'all kept saying million, I was like, what the hell are y'all talking about? Y'all shouldn't start drinking so early in the morning.
Maybe I'll start drinking earlier.
Debbie, you did it wrong, you did it wrong.
No, that was a cut and paste from Greg, so I didn't do it.
No, it says a hundred thousand right here.
No, you typed.
Okay, we're gonna find this out.
No, we're gonna just make the change and move on.
Amen.
I'll make the change.
I, I would say what we ought to look at doing is plugging in maybe two fifty, just as a placeholder for building improvements. Aside from what we've specifically discussed, and we can sit down with Greg and kinda hash through two fifty. If we try to hash through everything, we'll go to five hundred thousand in a heartbeat. If we tell him, look, we're willing to do two fifty next year, maybe that gets him really thinking about what's critical.
Well, and hopefully, there's some of these things that he could possibly do, and like, upgrading lighting fixtures, I mean.
Yeah.
I would think that that might be something that they might be able to handle.
Where's that one at?
On the annex here, it's a B, but, I mean, you're just basically looking at As.
I would, I was kinda thinking, you know, you just start by looking at As, and then you work your way through and say, we can't do everything that's an A. I still think we gotta have a discussion about Carnegie, what are we gonna do with that building? It's gonna get, it's gonna, you know, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars. If we're gonna invest it, are we gonna make long-term investment in that building, or are we? I hate that building. It's been an albatross since the day I've been here. Why'd you guys take it?
It's been here before me. I think it was given to us, to be quite honest, because I remember.
I would say.
Why were it given to us?
What I would suggest we do is, if you guys want to do it before the end of the year, we can just pick a day when we're here in session. And after the regular session, we can just sit down with this list and just hash through it. I'd almost rather see a list that only had the As on it. And didn't have any of the Bs or Cs, so that we can.
That came from him, anyway.
Well, I think the only problem with that is, you know, some of these things may be tied together.
Yeah.
You know, especially when you start talking about controls for HVAC systems. I mean, it probably, in, in regards to the annex, you know, I mean, I'd like to, especially with the, the Carnegie building, I'd like to see what, you know, what the needs are gonna be. And, uh, so.
What's the issue that we just had with the jail, the old jail? The heating and air conditioning, is that something that?
The boiler.
Has to be done, or are we just gonna keep piecing it till we figure it out?
I, that one, I, my suggestion is we piece that together till we figure out what we're gonna do. I'd hate to put in fifty thousand dollars and then just decide and do something substantial with it.
Yeah, that's fine.
As far as the smaller stuff he's got, you know, if we need a mower, we need a mower, if, you know, some of that stuff, I'm not. I don't know, what do you guys think?
The mower, I think it's gonna just, it's gonna make them more efficient, too, because the one they have, they're probably gonna get something a little bigger.
They are.
Kivak lift.
I don't know if that's, no, that's a.
Kivak twelve-gallon tank, that must be a power washer.
Or a floor scrubber or something.
Yeah.
I think it is a floor scrubber, I think you're right. That one, I could see, the one-man lift, we can rent a lift a lot of times for twelve grand and not have to store it. So, I don't know if that's necessarily a priority on my list. Deep cleaning bathroom, he's got that, the kivak twelve-gallon tank on there twice.
Different, different facilities, yeah.
And the new freezer, new dishwasher thing, that's not on Cutte's list. Why would it be on Camp's list? I mean, he put a new clothes dryer on, Cutte put a new clothes dryer on his list, so you know he's watching out for his appliances.
Maybe they've got it worked out together, that he'd ask for that and.
That would've been a mistake. That's a lot of money for a freezer and a dishwasher.
Well, the freezer is one of those upright.
Walk-in?
Yeah, those kitchen things that were.
Oh, is it a walk-in?
Well, I don't know if it's totally walk-in, I know it's stainless steel.
You can buy a Viking for damn near that amount.
I'd rather look at how many meals they usually cook a day.
That's what I was gonna say, how much food do they actually store and have to have room for?
I think, I think replacing the tools, we've been trying to keep his tools upgraded.
The twenty-five hundred down below?
Yeah.
Or right there?
I'm okay with that, he's just keep the.
I'm okay with the mower.
Make this cost down.
I'm okay with the mower, I'm okay with the two kivak floor machines, and I'm okay with the tools.
Mm-hmm.
You guys okay with those things?
Um, so the kivak machines are not mobile, or do they use it every day?
I think they're rather large.
They're big, and I think they're tough to go around.
Okay, so basically, the time that we use hauling it around and the wear and tear on it that you're gonna have is just.
Picking it up and getting it in and out of a truck or whatever.
Okay, well, I was, that's the only one I was a little bit.
I mean, we can ask him about it, but I think that's what they are, is a floor scrubber.
I think you're right, now that you say that, I think that's right. I'm okay with that stuff. I agree with you, a one-man lift, you know, it, I guess, I could be persuaded by Greg that that's a different one, if he could come over here and tell us how many, you know, how often are you having to do this, and it came out to a point where renting was way beyond the scope.
Was it for over there at the sheriff's, for changing stuff?
It's for changing all those high-up bulbs and the pods.
If he's gonna say we use it, you know, fifteen times a year, and it's gonna end up costing us.
I would rather, I'd like to have a discussion on that, because I would like to see if, if we're changing them that often, I think we ought to try to go to an LED light.
I think that's a good idea.
And that way, we're gonna change them, you know, every four or five years.
Pay more upfront for the light.
Yeah, yeah.
I agree. Let's have a discussion on that one.
Which one is?
On the one-man lift.
The one-man lift.
Oh, okay.
And put that with, when he has, when we have the discussion on the building stuff. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we finish capital then? Deb?
Yep.
Okay. And Roden Bridge is Roden Bridge, unless you guys have a desire to get into the capital in Roden Bridge, we kinda, those are all big projects by and large, and.
And I can give you a better list of those.
And we got a ton of.
I was just kinda surprised that they didn't really ask for a whole lot of the equipment. I mean, you would think that they'd need, I mean.
It's under Public Works capital sales.
I mean, they, they had like that, uh, L, that lift.
Where's that at? Are you in capital?
On there, it's under sales tax, but I'm just going under Roden Bridge's budget, under, well, actually, sales tax. Here, here it is, let's see what they say. Equipment spreadsheet. Here's what they have.
Oh, I see, equipment spreadsheet. Got it.
A street sweeper, a truck.
Oh, they did have that street sweeper.
How much did we budget for, where's that brochure at you had?
Well, I didn't bring those over here.
Equipment replacement, one point four five million. So, about three hundred thousand a year. What did we spend last year? What have we spent so far on that? Where's that at? Eight oh three working spreadsheet? Eight oh nine working spreadsheet?
Eight oh nine. We didn't have it.
That all shows zeros, that can't be it.
It does?
Must be eight oh three. Yeah, eight oh three. So, we spent two hundred and ninety thousand, what? I don't understand this. I liked your nice courthouse spreadsheet.
I know, I didn't update Roden Bridge, I'm sorry.
Tell me, tell me what we have spent the last two years.
Heavy equipment right here.
On fifty-four nine oh two.
Fifty-four, this year so far, we've spent one hundred and ninety-four thousand.
And we have a hundred and thirty encumbered?
Yes.
What do we got outstanding?
We got, well, in council payable, there's two, uh, two graders.
And that may be what this is.
And it's probably more than that, isn't it?
It's a hundred and thirty.
That was a hundred and thirty apiece.
Fabic, um, I can't. She didn't write it in there very good, I guess. Can't see much more of that here.
All right, go back. We'll just run, I'll just run a tab here. Go ahead, go back to the prior screen. Okay, so we've got a hundred ninety-four plus a hundred and thirty is three twenty-five, okay.
It's actually not out there in the accounts payable, so that's a different.
What did we spend the year before? What did we spend in twelve? Hundred and eighty? So five oh five so far. So we're way behind.
So we're, uh, so you're saying that those graders, is that in another fund?
It could be. It could be in their fund. No, I don't think so. The graders, they were a hundred.
They were in this, the accounts payable run?
Yeah.
Yeah. Probably on my desk.
You know what? I'm gonna have to open the last year's budget, I guess, 'cause.
I asked Larry.
Was it fabic?
They're being, yeah, they're being bought out of the road and bridge portion of the sales tax.
Oh, right, that, so it is sales tax. Why, how come it ain't showing there?
She's gonna check. You're bringing back up here. And we may have already, I mean, that could be, we may have paid for part of it, too.
Well, that's what I should be able to see it up there.
Y'all got your Christmas this Friday, too?
My big, my client party.
St. Louis?
Yeah.
That's what Melody was saying you were gonna make. I was like, god dang, how does that, it always falls.
Well, last year I had a burst appendix, as you may recall.
Oh, that's right.
I spent, uh.
Two of them, a hundred and thirty thousand apiece.
And that's coming out of, yeah, eight oh three.
Yeah, that's right. Last year you did have an emergency.
Is that the same? Can I see those invoices?
See how it shows there encumbered? Just one of them?
That's one of them.
That should be unposted accounts payables, where it should be right there. I'll have to check and.
No, no, it's, a hundred and thirty's the total. Unit cost is sixty-five one ten.
Is that just the same page disorder?
Same purchase order?
That would be right.
Yeah, it's the same.
One thirty-two twenty is what you got in there.
Oh, yeah, but usually they're.
But what I couldn't figure out is usually it would, that is entered, it should show right here.
Yeah, that's the same backup, it's just a thicker per sir. So that's the one thirty-two twenty, Debbie.
Okay. So then you'll see where we are.
Okay. So we spent five oh five out of one point four five, so we've got nine hundred and fifty K to do over three years. Is that right?
That's what that said.
Uh, so we got.
P W S, where's the network sales.
Is that right?
Debbie's final.
I don't even know why I'm watching you with your mouse up there, 'cause I do this every year. I'm watching it, trying to keep up. I'm like, where'd you go? Like a cat, I'm gonna start swatting at her in a minute. That's why it's great having these on our desk, so we can just, we can go where we want to with it. That's my.
So the three forty-three that's being requested is really not out of line. It's kinda right in.
Is that what they're asking for, is three forty-three? I think the biggest portion of that is that street sweeper.
It is. It's kinda right in line with where they ought to be to progress through this thing.
Where are you trying to get to?
So it's, street sweeper for two twenty-seven. A bigger, a five fifty for sixty-two K, two post lifts, a, a two post lift, eighteen K, a pick, a pickup truck at twenty-eight, and a trailer at six.
If you go back to their request sheet there.
Their request sheet?
It's right, it's just the tab at the bottom, it says equipment. Right there.
Yep, sorry.
I don't have any real issue with that, do you guys? I mean, they need to keep track of their four fifty.
And I'll do one of those up again. I'll find it up there. The five-year deal on them, too. I had it started. I just didn't keep theirs updated, 'cause their projects come, and then they switch, and then they come, and then I don't know what's going on.
I just got a question. So there's, they've got in their surplus sale gov deals. So they're gonna buy a pickup truck out of that?
No, I think they're trade-in.
That's the trade-in side.
Oh, okay, alright.
So in the end, a lot of times what happens is we end, we budget two twenty-seven for a street sweeper, they get a trade-in on their old one, we end up only spending two hundred, maybe.
Okay. How come the sheriff can't go buy stuff at surplus?
State surplus?
They buy, they used to buy patrol cars from the patrol. Used patrol cars.
They will, as long as there's an armored vehicle or a tank on.
Well, right. But he was telling me that he wanted to buy a truck that was out there, and as long as it was a emergency vehicle or something, that he could buy it, but if it was a standard pickup truck, that he couldn't buy it, 'cause he had to get bids on it. And he says, by the time you get bids on it, it's gone. So I'm just wondering, I mean, I thought the whole point of having state surplus was it so that other local municipalities could go buy stuff there.
But when it goes over the bid amount, I guess there's no flexibility in the statute about the bidding policies? So there is a question about that, of whether we can go buy those vehicles off of state surplus, because they're.
I mean, how is that any different than buying something off a state contract? I mean, as, I mean, we do that all the time now.
Yeah, it was bid when the state bought it.
Right.
Yeah. And now it's used, and now we're trying to purchase it. I don't know why.
But it's over the six thousand dollars, and so we can't just go buy it, even though it's, you know.
On surplus?
Not, it's over the state bid. We're not supposed to, unless it's a specialty kind. That's how Jim has qualified it.
But if it's on surplus, it's not gonna be over the state bid.
Yeah, vehicles can be. Over the amount of state bid, what'd you say?
I had no clue what you guys were talking about.
You're talking about a surplus vehicle costing more than a new one.
No, I'm talking about you buy a surplus vehicle from state surplus.
Right.
And you're going over the county's bid amount limit, which is the thirty-five hundred or the forty-five hundred. So Jim's idea is the statute don't give us any flexibility to buy anything over a certain amount without bidding it.
What? If it's on a surplus sale.
Off a state contract or pictures from the state?
Specialty vehicle.
That don't.
And that's what Jim's quantified it as a specialty.
So if we wanna get a, a lawnmower, just since we have Greg looking for one, that was two years old, somebody used, and they, it, they needed something different, or for whatever reason, they got rid of it from some other agency, and we can get it for forty-five hundred, or go pay sixty-two hundred dollars because we bid it, that don't make sense, 'cause it's not competing against anybody.
But it's, it's a used, a used piece of equipment versus new, and it's, I don't know, I don't understand it, it's.
Can we make three phone bids and say, hey, do y'all have a two thousand and nine comparable to a?
Basically Jim that won't.
John Deere fifty-five hundred, forty-eight inch cut?
Forty-five hundred, that is phone bids.
Over six thousand. I, I don't care if it's fifty thousand. I'm just saying, we should be able to get it off of surplus if, 'cause usually surplus is not gonna be over what somebody's gonna bid or sell something.
Yeah, usually you can buy it for pennies on the dollar, but, you know, if it's decent enough stuff, but.
That would be a Jill or an attorney's opinion on that.
Next time we come across something like that, where we have an opportunity to get something on it, I wanna do it and let somebody sue us. Tell them, bring it on. It might not be a good idea, now. You can wear your attorney hat and tell me I'm gonna be fighting the wrong fight there.
Well, I think it's Jim that won't sign off on the purchase.
We'll go around him.
He's gotta prove all the things.
Oh, I'll buy him lunch or something and sweet talk him.
All right, stop it. Children.
It, I mean, it's a catch twenty-two.
I know you will. That's why I told you to stop it.
It's a catch twenty-two.
Come on, Jim.
I, I think because it would probably have been bid before.
So Jim's an attorney?
He thinks he is. Plays one on TV.
That's what I'm saying. He's just the auditor, so he's saying, well, I don't agree with this, but.
That's why we should have Jill look at it, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest we just get an opinion.
If we don't like hers, we'll get somebody else's. Sorry.
Well, that's the architect attorney thing we've got going.
I know, as long as they don't pick on politicians now.
Okay, well, I'll get that list and I'll get it to you.
Make sure you pick on Wrigley.
Or contractors. Okay, keep us going, Debbie. I'm sorry.
Let's go back to general accounts then, and let's get those two things out of the way. Which was, let's just start with welfare.
Hang on here.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I have to get to it. Just give me a second.
Where do we gotta go to the budget again?
Yes.
Commission F drive, commission's budget, and then which one? I'm sorry.
Um, then you go to general.
General fund worksheet?
Yes.
Or general welfare?
General fund worksheet.
Down at the bottom?
Yes.
General fund worksheet.
Then you go to tab one forty-three.
It doesn't like me.
What do you mean?
Keep saying I got circular references.
I know. I can't find that, so just.
Alright, so what tab? One forty-three?
Yes. Public welfare.
Remove or allow circular reference. Well, tell us where it's at.
These are entities. The only one that.
I received a request from the Downtown Business Association to do some Thursday Night Lives. Um, we talked a little bit about that a week ago, ten days ago, maybe. Well, they asked for twenty thousand to do it during July, the month of July. It's four events, if four nights, I thought that was kinda way out of line. The other thing was, I don't think we should be doing them in July and August, 'cause that's when nobody will come, it's a thousand degrees downtown. Um, so I asked them to revise it and send it to us for May, so I'd rather just do it in either May or September, October, one way or the other. So I don't know what your guys' thought is on, I, I can't see us doing twenty thousand.
No, I'd be hard-pressed to do anything more than the max that we have on here at.
Ten?
At ten, and I'm, I'm struggling to go over five on any new ones, 'cause I'm not so sure we should even be throwing any money at these things. I don't know, part of me does. That, to me, is more economic development, if we're gonna look at it from that standpoint. Same with, I don't know how much to salute to America's economic development. They have a lot of people come down here for it.
And I know they increased their ask, too, didn't they?
They did, yeah.
Well, they did, uh, two years ago, too, when I was still on there, 'cause the city was putting ten in.
Jill kinda does both those, those Thursday, Thursday night lives.
And I got the proposal, and if you guys wanna see it before, I mean, I did forward on, 'cause I told them I didn't like it. I wanted it redone, but it's got, of that twenty thousand dollars, twenty-three or four hundred of it's Jill's fee. I don't know how much salute pays her, but it's a whole lot more.
Yeah, what is it?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two thousand, yeah.
I think.
Well, she gets so much in the commissions on what she brings in.
I think, well.
I think it's around twenty-two.
Yeah, she actually had an assistant that she paid one year, and, I don't know, you couldn't pay me that much to do it. She gets a couple months off from it, 'cause they were looking at, you know, finding somebody different, and, you know, Dan Rowling was pretty, expressed his feelings about it, and I think at one point said, hell, he'd do it for twenty-six thousand, or twenty-two, whatever it is, it's like, have at it. It's a, it's a headache. You can't have any fun up here either, 'cause you're continuously doing stuff. I think. What she does.
So what do you guys wanna do?
Do we have to decide today what we're gonna do on all these, or we can put a marker in there that says, you know?
Can you insert a line for downtown? And just put a plate, you just, right now it doesn't need anything in it.
How come Homemaker went to seventy-nine?
That's what they requested. I was gonna ask you that, if you wanted to do that or not.
I wanna keep it at seventy-five is where I would be. Like to just keep it.
Why are we doing, are we gonna do Art in the Friggin' Park again? I'm sick of dealing with Carlos Stack.
Now, you guys can go out there and look if you want to, to see what they're actually requesting, and that's under one forty-three folder there.
Did she get us anything? 'Cause she didn't get it to us last year.
Yeah, she did.
Art in the Park. Hang on, look at it. See what Art in the Park says.
Soil conservation. That's to the SCS out there, that's the.
It's a senior nutrition center, is that out at the mall?
I think they have different locations, different places. I think you absolutely.
Do we ever get the Art in the Park this year? Remember, she had to, we were not gonna advance any money, it had to come after she did it? She, have we paid her?
Two thousand thirteen, she didn't get it to us, though. But she got us a request for fourteen, right, Debbie? That's what you're saying? I understand that, right?
Yeah, she got, she did both.
She did last year, yeah, it was the Pakistani cargo truck thing.
Truck, yeah.
But I don't know if it ever, did it ever come?
Yes.
And?
It was beautiful.
Is it worth it? What, what was the art portion of it?
'Cause they decorated the truck up, and were you here for her presentation? Well, actually, uh, what's her husband's name?
I was here last year when they talked about it, but, but I never saw the, I never even heard it was coming to town. Did they advertise, did?
Yeah, that's the only way I knew about it.
Why did we pay it in May?
I guess because we were waiting till she did her thing.
It's October thirteenth.
Of this year?
Yeah, that's what her letter says. August twenty-sixth, twenty thirteen, to Jim LaPage. We are excited after having showcased a life-size car, cardboard cargo truck, beautified with youth art, performing arts turned downtown for two months, reaching numerous visitors over the holiday concert season to roll into Cole County with the real motorized art workshop based on the decorate, decorative Pakistani cargo truck this October twenty thirteen.
Have a look at what she wrote last year, I guess. Maybe she did the truck again last year.
I don't know. She sent it to Jim. Tell Jim to come up with the money.
Well, he put it in there.
Well, yeah. Think she's asking the wrong person.
Oh, she'd be willing to come talk to you guys, too, if she wanted to.
I.
I guess I think we need to come up with the amount of money that we're gonna spend and divvy it up however we decide to divvy it up, but. Does that art inside the park, does it draw any people to the community?
Originally, it was really cool. I mean, I'll give her credit. The original stuff was really neat, and they did it out, like.
Mortal Park.
Mm-hmm. And then they did it out at County Park. They did, I mean, they did some pretty neat stuff. I give them credit, but.
Mark, I think this is the contract we had her sign last year, and that's why I paid. It basically says, if, if no event is held, the entire amount will be refunded to the county. So we put it in her lap, but I guess it's our lap to make sure.
That really means it's our lap, yeah, to go back and say, hey, where is it? Well, I'm not willing to appropriate any money for, more money for that until she shows us what she's done. So.
Do you want me to have her come in?
I think like we did last year, she came in, well, Chuck came in and showed what they were gonna do. They had pictures of the truck and stuff, and I'm, I'm not an artsy-fartsy person whatsoever, so I have no inclination to put any money towards it, but I don't think that we shouldn't just because of that reason.
Well, if she's not doing anything, we shouldn't fund it. But if she did something.
Right, if she comes up and says, this is what I'm gonna do with it this year, then we say, okay, once you're done with that, send us a bill, and if she says, well, I need some of it so I can start the project, we can.
Well, that's the reason we wrote that contract the way we did it.
Mm-hmm, because of previous years when they did some kinda drawing on that wall there by the tri-level.
Did you read her request for this year, Mark? Didn't say anything?
I didn't, I pulled it up, I'm sorry.
I just closed it, gosh darn it, I just closed it.
I got it. But, I mean, we can do that to historical soc- society too, what do they do with it, where, you know, are we gonna, are we just...
We did that one, I made him come in one time.
I really don't wanna sit through that many things.
Because I said nay. Where the heck is that? Well, there's General Welfare.
There is areas across the county to meet the underserved public, special youth, and invest approximately a hundred and twenty thousand. Well, it's kinda vague.
No, nothing.
It's kinda vague.
She doesn't have any project. We will continuing a, oh, the twenty-fourteen experience will continue a traveling art lab theme with the sketchbook project. Tell us the sketchbook project. Alright, I guess we just need to have her come up.
Do you review all them bills that Shari sends us?
Uh, I need to look at them.
Okay, did you, are you, were you gonna give me a dollar figure for that, I don't know, are we just putting the name in there for now? The downtown.
Just put it in there for now, and we'll...
We're gonna have to come back to this.
Because we don't pay it until...
Right, I mean, uh, you're gonna give me an amount.
If we're gonna decide today, I'm not gonna vote for it until I see something, you know, like you said, you was gonna get something together, they had something together that's gonna show us.
They sent me, I mean, I can send you what they sent me, but I don't wanna do something July and August, and...
Who else contributes to Thursday Night Live?
Downtown Business Association, the downtown businesses themselves, um, somewhere I've got the budget, it's a lot of people that kick money in, I was surprised.
Gosh, does the city do, do they put it all on?
The city doesn't do it. It's not a, there's no governmental entity paying for it right now. The only reason that I even at, I mean, I was the one who reached out to them and said they ought to send us something is, it would be nice to have more nights of it, because it's become something that's been nice for downtown, they just have a hard time funding it, because you can only hit the bars so many times for...
I just thought the city did, because they put out all the stuff and...
They give them some in kind, you know, they block the streets off.
Don't they have like Tuesday Night Live when there's nothing to do around here? Instead of Thursday Night Live, Thursday Night Live, there's always something happen, you can just go downtown, why block off the streets on that night, do it on Tuesday or Monday.
I wish they'd block the streets off every day from eleven AM till midnight, every day. And let all the restaurants put chairs and stuff out in the streets, and have tables, and make it a walking area, I think it'd be great.
As far as the general public welfare, the whole department thing goes, I'd be fine with saying that I'm not adding anything to it, I won't take away from the ones that we give to now. But I don't wanna add anything to it, I don't know, I feel like we should be giving money to that kinda stuff, if we do, then we put it under something different, economic development, or...
We tried that one year.
If you have welfare at the, as the title, it just bugs me.
It's, the reason it's got that language is, there's a statute, in the county statute, says that.
I know, but it...
And I actually think it says, as I recall, it says, "We shall provide funds for the general public welfare." I don't even think it's an optional one.
But there are questionable ones in there, that, that should probably go on our economic...
Even like salute to America, I would think could be questionable.
Yeah, that's, that's economic development, I mean, if you're gonna argue paying for it. Now, the ones that aren't, you know, stuff like Habitat for Humanity, Senior Nutrition, those are for the public welfare.
We have tried to move those, but then they just go back in there, because the auditors... Okay, the only thing left in general is one twenty-seven, I don't know if you guys wanna tackle that?
Tuck the big one?
Yep.
So we left, we just, we left a marker in there for the Thursday Night Live thing, we're gonna come back and revisit that once we, once you send that to us, or once they get something...
Once they get me something better.
So...
And if they don't get me anything better, I'm not gonna bring it back.
So who's asking us for the money, the city?
Downtown Business Association, they actually put it on, kinda like you got the salute board, does it? Alright.
Okay, one twenty-seven.
Don't even waste your time with the revenue, just go straight to expenses, because the revenue is just what it is. That's my...
One twenty-seven, there you are.
Just don't budget anything increasing.
Well, there's a lot of carryforward, or one carryforward, it's a big one that I'll have to figure out. Yep, okay, not too much there. Expenses, thirty thousand, I had to up that for workers' comp. I just, what we do is, you've seen our increase this year, I have to pay two months of next year this year.
Right.
And then same thing for next year, and I don't know what kinda increase, so...
Okay.
I put it on both sides, because we get paid back from all the different funds involved. The audit, okay, I wrote out to the side just to help me.
Outside audit costs through your bid?
Yeah, the only one, do you wanna keep, uh...
Agreement commission plus CPI, agreement with commission plus CPI. Spectrum Consulting is not seventy-five thousand dollars.
No, it's not, it's them plus anything else we may have come up, we may have to hire an outside attorney for, or...
And their contract comes up in June, I think, as I recall.
How much is it?
I can tell you what it is exactly.
Twenty-five or thirty?
Thirty-five, twenty-five, thirty?
Is it twenty-five or thirty, I can't remember which. Just long enough, twenty-five maybe?
I know we've asked them to help with some stuff, and they've done some...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
For a year.
I mean, they've looked some stuff up for us and things, and it, we've also invited the small towns and other communities to...
And several of them have used them.
Yeah.
To look at us, so...
And, so, I think it's been a...
And we've get, we get an email, what, once a week, from Jen?
Every week, yeah, what's going on, that's nice to know.
Hell, even when I think she was away on maternity leave.
I think you're right, I think she was doing it while she's on maternity.
Oh, this is where we actually paid some of that prosecutor's...
Yeah, that was the, this year we had to pay.
Yikes, yeah.
And then I, I put her law library cost of a hundred and seven dollars a month through them.
That's fine.
I did put a couple little issues we have with our website that Jennifer had to get fixed, two hundred and some dollars.
That's just professional services, so... Nine-one-one system.
That just seems like an enormous amount of money for nine-one-one.
That's, you doubled that.
Well, I realize that, because the sheriff's paying part of it too, aren't they?
EMS, EMS sales taxes, sheriff is not paying for it.
It's a one-three, one-point-three million dollar system, give or take.
Per year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did some math on that, I just, I mean, how many, how many people are they having running that thing?
And we're not even paying half.
They run, I haven't been over, it's just been long enough, I don't recall, but isn't it three? Three full-time, twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five in the center? Plus a, plus a super, one person who supervises the whole thing.
So they got four full-time people, twenty-four-seven?
No, they have three full-time, twenty-four-seven, and then one extra full-time, not twenty-four-seven, eight-five.
Eight-hour, eight-hour, on the weekends too, or not?
No, they have a, they have a, I would call them like a business manager, but they call them supervisor, I think he's, he used to be a lieutenant, I think.
I mean, I don't know, I, I did the math on that and plugged in a decent salary for them, and you ain't near one-point-three million. And I don't know what the expense is on, uh, you know, even accounting for some vacation time and different things, uh... But, I mean, I don't know if they're paying a lot of overtime, or, or where they're at, but, uh...
I don't remember where it was either.
And I don't know if, if a lot of their software and stuff is, is outrageous, or...
Trying to think, what the, is it fi- a full-time twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five slot is... Is it three-point-five times the slot, I'm trying to think what it is, it's a hundred...
I'm sure there's probably a little bit of carryover, maybe, I don't know, maybe not.
Hundred sixty-eight hours, how many hours are there in a week? Twenty-four times seven...
Hundred and sixty-eight.
Hundred sixty-eight hours a week. Minus about forty.
I mean, you can do it a number of different ways.
Four-point-one, so the bare minimum is four-point-one per position, alright? So that's twelve...
Here's their motion.
Yeah, I see your sign.
I mean, I don't know, where are they getting that, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars?
That's a good question. And that's just salaries, that even the health insurance or retirement?
I mean, maybe it's there somewhere, I don't know, but...
You know, maybe we oughta get a little more information on it.
I mean, I'm just thinking if, so Debbie, you're saying that the one-seventy-nine, and then we're kicking in another one-seventy-nine out of EMS?
Yeah, the total is three fifty-eight.
I mean, I...
Two twenty-eight.
It just seems like for, for that kinda, that kinda money, we could operate our own nine-one-one center.
Well, especially now that we have EMS, since they're, 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 they're there twenty-four-seven anyway, answering their dispatches.
Either that, or, or let's tell the city that we'll take it over for them, I mean, it looks like it's a moneymaker for them.
We need to get nine-one-one coming together again.
Well, I thought you guys were after the last, since we let the contract go by that the sheriff...
I mean, we could ask, we could ask the sheriff about it tomorrow when he's up here, but, I mean, I just, I looked at that budget, and, um, looked at what we were spending, and I was like, what in the hell are they doing down there?
Then it becomes a, I don't know how, how this works.
I mean, what are, what's our budget for EMS, for salaries?
We're up in the millions, I can tell you that. Three million salaries alone, with benefits.
With benefits?
Yes. We're at a million-five just on full-time, you add all of those together, we're at a two million-two. That's just in salaries.
I mean, you're, you're talking about a ton more people than, than what they should have nine-one-one.
We have forty-four full-time, and now forty, actually forty-five full-time, count Mike, and forty-four, fifty part-timers. That's before we divided, we used to take it out of law enforcement, but then, you know, the issues there, so then we started paying it down, yeah.
And then animal shelter, it looks like...
Yes, we pay them...
Hundred-and-two thousand every year, or, is there increases on that, or...
There's supposed to be CPI on that, we started at a hundred thousand.
So that's gonna continue to go up and up and up?
Yeah, that's really come down compared to where we were, we were paying a lot more than that at one point.
To the city of Jefferson?
To the city, yeah.
Just for housing, some of the dogs that we bring in, or whatever, dogs, cats, whatever?
Dogs, cats, plus we put in on the building, when they built the building.
Built that lemon? They built it twice.
Well, or maybe we, maybe we paid for, I mean, I was here, but it was a long time ago, um...
On the new one?
No, on the old one. Maybe did they remodel it or something, I don't think, I don't know how old that other one was, hate to say I've been here that long, but...
And then the chamber is a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, is that? Is there an annual increase on that too, or, I thought it was a one-fifty?
Oh, that's the thousand dollars for the Taste of Jefferson. Like what it was.
No, I, that's just a, throwing in my sight too, for a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and then they're gonna stick us for another thousand, I'm going...
Don't say it.
I'm worried about a thousand dollars.
Well, I guess, well, years ago, we were at a hundred-and-fourteen thousand, ninety-six, ninety-seven?
You know, and it comes up a lot, but, and it's hard to measure exactly what the chamber does, but I think that what they're trying to do, and what they do accomplish, we wouldn't be able to hire somebody to do that. You know, if we need something done, we can make a phone call, we can get them to do it. I don't know if, they so much have the county in mind as they do the city, which sometimes is hard for us to justify to our county constituents. Is you is, is you ain't my constituent.
For a long time, we were paying fifty thousand to them, and then all of a sudden, in two thousand and seven, we had a five-year arrangement, we think, to start the hundred-and-fifty thousand, but we've continued it.
Well, in our quarterly report, things, I haven't gotten anything out of those really.
Sorry. What's that?
Talking about the chamber thing.
Where are you guys at?
Well, we were just talking about the chamber, we were talking about the animal shelter agreement, and, um, nine-one-one.
I sure would like to not have to pay for parking.
Okay, let's go back over capital arrangements. Okay, and so what else we got there? Any general fund...
Really look like there's much anything of any real substance in there. I hate paying for MAC.
And you'll notice line eighty-eight goes up or down depending on what I need to balance, and that thing will change a lot when I get the carryforwards.
Okay, guys got anything else?
Receiver ship, let's show these guys.
What, how much we got, receivership?
Six-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
You know, and that could be used for stuff over at the court house, when we start doing stuff over there. So, if we look at doing that, the old jail, making rooms and stuff, we don't have to take that out of capital, uh, projects, so...
Tell Debbie that we oughta move over there in the back of the old jail and put the assessor in our office.
You put the assessor in the old jail? In one of the big cells?
Well, but I thought the, I thought the thing was putting the assessor in the same building as the collector.
Ah, yeah, I remember that.
You know, I like that idea, though.
Details, details.
I wouldn't mind having an office with a cell.
I ain't moving.
I ain't moving, staying right here.
I think this is an excellent discussion for the twenty-fifteen budget.
Well, you'll be very agreeable, or not agreeable?
Uh, you know, I'll be sitting there going, "I don't care, because I'm not voting on it."
And I think we need to have a long range...
So you'll abstain, so...
No, I don't get voted on it.
We need to have a long-range planning, and, you know, put that on there, say, hey.
I mean, I'll be sitting here for the meetings, but my successor will end up voting on it in January, so...
Bet you're making everybody that comes to see you go through security, and I just don't think...
Why shouldn't they? I'm up here unsan...
See, I'm, I totally disagree with that.
I don't like that idea either.
I don't, I don't like the security thing, I think that separates government from people.
Well, no, they should be able to walk right up to us with their gun and pop us in the head.
How many times you been shot so far here?
How many times you been threatened, maybe?
None.
That's good, that's good to know.
Okay, where are we going next?
Well, we're actually done with GR, um...
So what else you got, aside from law enforcement, what you're doing tomorrow?
I just really need to know if, if salaries are out, or if you guys wanna look at anything in that respect, or not.
Well...
The only thing I wanna say, Mark, is, uh, employees do appreciate the salary incre- or the, no, the...
I'm telling you this, I, I have, I said this the other day, I don't know if you were in here for this or not. If there's a presentation on salaries, if, if anybody wants salary increases, I, and I mean general, I don't mean specific positional slots, I mean in general, one percent or two percent, whatever. I have no problem with that, but I'm not paying a dime extra for insurance, we're taking the four-fifty back out and passing it on a hundred percent to everybody. And we're restructuring to get savings out of the plan.
I wanna say, what, the budget they came down to you guys, it had twenty percent in there.
I know.
And it had a three percent in there. The difference between the twenty and the thirty, or what it ended up with, is about one percent. So I'm just saying that.
Oh, so Jim does our pay raises now, Debbie, really?
No, I'm just saying that you're cutting the budget.
No, we're not cutting the budget.
Technically, you're cutting the budget, from what Jim said.
Technically, we're not cutting the budget, because we've not approved a budget.
Right, you're cutting his...
We're cutting his, okay, so let me ask you a question, if Jim came down and proposed thirty percent across the board salary increases, and zeroed out our carryforward, you'd be okay with that? And if we reduced it, you'd say, "Oh, you're cutting the budget!"
I'm just telling you the argument right now, I'm just telling you the...
You know what, anybody wants to come up here, I got no problem. You guys wanna do salary increases, we can have that debate and that discussion. I think what we're looking at right now is, we're at a point now where we are no longer gonna be in an operational surplus. Jim's... Jim's proposed budget is a significant operational deficit. Significant operational deficit.
I mean, I, I think where I'm at is, is probably no raises. And, you know, I'm not saying that I won't look at it, but since we did absorb all the healthcare costs.
I mean, that's huge for.
It, it, it is huge and, and, you know, I'll go a little bit further. I'm, I'm really reluctant to bring on any more FTEs for anybody.
I agree.
You know, sheriff, prosecutor, you know, anybody, but anyway, those are long-term costs that I don't know that we'll be able to sustain.
That's fine. Okay, well then, basically.
And I guess to go even further, I mean, if we need more people, I'd be more apt to hire part-time people. Tims, whatever.
I agree with that.
I would almost like. I'm a little wary of that twenty-nine hours, to be real honest. I would like to see us hire temps at twenty hours and not even come close to that twenty-nine, because I think if you.
Somebody's gonna sneak it in there, oh, well, we're gonna help it.
And then, and then just what I read is if you, that average goes over, then, you know, it's.
You guys have to buy it for the next year. It's not the way I see it.
And so, you know, anybody, I, I'd, I'd like to cut it off at twenty. If you need two temps, then fine, hire two temps, but.
I agree. You know, we're trying, we're trying to do a lot of stuff for long-term financial structure of the county and Jim could care less about that stuff. Jim's all about offering everybody mono from heaven. That's his thing. He likes that, because he always looks like a hero. He has never one time, even when the first year I was up here and I, we came walking in with a big operational deficit, remember that, and the reserves were falling. Jim proposed pay raises for everybody. With the reserves fall, I mean, we were, we were a year away from going bankrupt and he's proposing raises.
Yeah, I understand.
We've done a pay raise, I mean, you have come back and checked, Debbie, every year, just about?
Yeah, I have to remember where I put that.
It's a, I mean, it's rather enlightening looking at all these accounts payable and, you know, it seems like once you have the money in the budget, I mean, people are just spending, 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 I mean, and I think all departments could really take a look at it and try to reduce some costs there. I'm not saying that there aren't certain things that we need, but some of these luxury things, I don't think that we necessarily have to have.
Well, you know, we managed to get almost five hundred thousand dollars annual savings the year we cracked down on November, December pay expenditures. And we put two hundred and fifty thousand of that into pay raises and we banked the other two fifty and helped balance the budget.
And if, and I'm, yeah, if, if we can get the sheriff and some of these other departments to cut down on excessive spending, then there is some extra money for the employees, so.
But, you know, as long as revenue is flat.
Is it?
If we could get a big, you know, if we could get a year of big sales tax growth, that'd be great. It would help dramatically, but it sure sec doesn't seem to be happening right now.
Do we need to look at certain people as far as raises or anything?
You just gotta think too, if it ever, if we do ever, we've been lucky, we didn't get hit. We pretty much stayed flat. We never did go down.
Yeah, we did go down.
How much was it?
Uh, oh, seven, oh, eight, eight, oh, nine, what was the year we had?
It wasn't a substantial amount, though, that.
We went down about five, six percent.
Was it really?
That one year was a bit, the sales tax, the one year we had a pretty big sales tax hit.
So we're six, seven?
We're, we're only now just slightly above where we were at, like, you know, seven. I mean, that's how far down we fell.
And we've been having like a one percent growth a year and it's taken five years to get back to where we were.
Where's our sales tax at, if you got that new, the new one?
I haven't got this month yet.
It's a little too early, probably get it into the sweet growth.
Here's the.
How come the city gets theirs so much quicker than we do or something?
Actually, I think they get theirs later.
So they're working on, they're, they're, so they're working on September then, almost.
Yeah, I think they, but what you saw in the paper last week, the week before, was the report of what they got in November.
Well, of course, they were wrapping up their budget year, which ended October thirty-first.
Here's, we're at four point eight. We're at, you know, right around one percent.
Increase.
Yeah.
It's just really.
Here you can see the other years.
You can see it was, where's the two thousand, what's line?
I can give you these.
That's not the right spreadsheet.
Well, I can give you these.
Roll down to, it was a seven or eight. There you go. Look at, look at the difference between eight and nine, Jeff, on the screen up there she's got. Two thousand eight, we had five point two million, and two thousand nine, we had four point nine million.
We had a six percent decrease there.
That was the big.
But we're up above it now.
But no, but no, six, you're at five point two.
Still took four years to get back to where it was.
Well, the problem was, especially in the long.
But we're not going up three percent like, which was the.
We're not growing anywhere near like we had been.
No.
Yeah, look at these years. We were, we were hitting good eleven percent, five, six.
So it corrected itself a little bit, slowed it down to eight now. Jack?
Here's the, the grid thing on salaries. I didn't get last year's in there.
That's what I was looking up, the one that she just put up there. I did have a copy of the old one. If you think about it, shoot me that.
This one?
That one again, uh, so it's got the newest ones on there.
It's been a long time. I mean, two thousand ten was the first time in a long time we got that. Basically, that's the way people look at it. I'm not talking about health insurance here, I'm just talking about salary.
I don't want to say changes. I didn't even mean to change it. Just talking to myself out there.
A lot of it had to do with the grid. We were trying to stay on those grids. I moved everybody to grids when we first took them over. See that grid, that's when we started, two thousand nine. When that study was done, we couldn't even put half our people working on it, so.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time trying to bring people up to minimum.
All right, with the adjustments to the base.
Yeah, just to get people minimal. I mean, it was, we had people that were like five thousand, ten thousand dollars under minimum.
Okay.
Worked it out, okay. You know, I'm, I, I, I just, I find it very hard with the huge health insurance costs we took to really talk about pay raises. If somebody wants to come up and explain to me the justification for it, I'm, I'm first to tell you, I always want to listen. But I think it's very difficult with the amount of, that we took. Jim, Jim does it to punch us. He puts in, he puts in numbers because he knows we can't live with them.
That article didn't do us any help either because the article said that it was a, uh, that he had the increase of health insurance in there and a three percent, which he didn't have.
How much is our budget increasing?
It's really, it's increasing by one percent to get that other amount.
Our total budget's gonna increase by one percent on the expense side. How much is our revenue increasing? Right, so, you know, if we keep going down that road, we're, we're gonna be a structural deficit, just like we're talking about with the, the sheriff's budget. And, you know, we can look into a crystal ball and say, hey, everything's gonna be rosy next year. We're gonna have a three percent increase in revenue. And yeah, maybe we could do it, but I, we're gonna have to be the bad guys here and say, no, we gotta be fiscally responsible and good stewardship of people's tax money, all them good words you use when you're campaigning and stuff, but look, common sense says, don't be spending if we ain't got it.
Well, and that's why we budget on actual versus projected stuff that the state and some of these others budget on projections and that's a disaster.
I mean, his, he's factoring, and I don't know how he gets this, that we're gonna bring in two million dollars more in license fees and permits. Now, I don't know, it goes into license fees and permits in his.
It's about everything else besides.
The two mil, he's projecting a se, a, a, two million dollars is a ten, twelve, twenty-one percent increase in license permits and fees.
Is that in general fund or is that over the whole county?
It's the whole budget. But that's a twenty-one, he's projecting a twenty-one percent increase in that line. And if you take that out and you just assume it stays the same, you know, we drop, we drop into structural deficit.
Well, I mean, if we could get, if we could get that per diem on the prisoners, back up to what, that twenty-one fifty or whatever it was, what they're paying now.
Oh, then they'll need more people.
No.
Guarantee it. They're gonna come in tomorrow and try to argue for more people.
I did go ahead and send him that spreadsheet yesterday.
Good.
Both of those, the one, the twenty-year, and then where we are with the budget currently.
Twenty years, the critical one, I mean.
So I'm just, I'm just curious. So the sheriff spent a hundred and ninety-three thousand on vehicles this year. Because I know they're gonna come in and ask for vehicles.
Well, they did already, yeah.
And it, it's in there. It's in there right now. I mean.
But I'm just trying to figure out.
They asked for.
But see, Wheeler didn't even know that the, that the hundred and ninety-three came out of their budget. They thought it was coming out of ours.
They're asking for a hundred and sixty-two, a hundred and sixty-two thousand?
You know what? I'm gonna go for what we approved. That's probably a better place to go.
Hundred and sixty-two thousand for vehicles?
So I guess my question is, is that are they gonna need the hundred and ninety-three thousand that they spent this year for, out of their budget, plus the hundred and fifty thousand that they want out of ours?
No, the hundred and sixty-something thousand for cars is the total amount for vehicles. They're, they're wanting out of our money, though, not out of theirs.
What are they gonna do with the?
And the reality is, we got, they got, eventually, they have to fund the sheriff's operations out of their budget. And they gotta figure out how to make that work and, you know.
I struggle with it because Osage County's entire budget is less than our sheriff's budget alone. We got eight million that he operates off of and.
Here's what we.
They've got, I think, eight million that they operate the whole damn county off of. Of course, it's a mess down there, but it's not in the budget.
Where you at?
This is this year's budget for the capital improvement. We had asbestos removal there. We had the Sally Port here.
Okay.
We had a hundred and eighty thousand.
Hundred and eighty thousand for vehicles.
That's two thousand thirteen's.
Yes.
Out of our capital.
I know.
No.
Out of their law enforcement.
Yes.
What's, what's in the budget for fourteen?
They asked for.
I don't want to see their request. I want to see what's in, I want to see Jim's budget or our budget or whatever budget. You show a hundred and forty-seven thousand in theirs for this year.
I show one ninety-three.
I'm sorry.
One ninety-three.
One ninety-three.
And that's for the vehicles. Okay, whatever the difference is.
One ninety-three is what's currently plugged into their budget.
Right.
And that's just for vehicles?
No.
Well, that's all their capital, so it's vehicles and.
So a hundred and eighty thousand for vehicles and the other thirteen thousand five hundred are right there. It's what he said, that lock or whatever that is, the mattresses, the cleaning exterior windows.
So all those requests, they've already got a hundred and ninety-three thousand in their budget for?
Yes.
So I don't understand why they're up here asking for more cars.
Well, they don't want it, no, no, that is what they asked for. They don't want it in their budget.
Why?
Because their budget, because then, if you take out vehicles from their budget, their budget looks better and they can justify adding people.
Because we paid for their vehicles before.
Two years ago.
I think they think we should keep paying.
So that's gonna free up a hundred and eighty thousand dollars so they can do whatever the hell they want with it?
But keep in mind, that's, we have taken a lot out of the law enforcement fund. We have taken the nine-one-one out of there. We have also taken, we did take out their capital for a long time and we don't charge them administrative fee anymore that legally.
We work for a hard balancing budget. And we bend over backwards on it and they, we bend over backwards and they push.
I thought when we did that, though, the last cars that we bought, that was the agreement that we, this is the last time we're doing it.
Oh my, how quickly people forget.
And so now they're gonna come up again, because I thought I said, okay, we're gonna give this car, cars to you this one time. We're not gonna do the administrative fee. We're gonna get this lawsuit stuff over with and now.
You know, just gotta make it work. All you have to do is go into this spreadsheet, our little estimated magic spreadsheet here.
Right here.
And pull out their budget requests, which are wherever they're at. And just look at what they're requesting. So three full-time employees in the jail division at however much a person that is, say forty thousand apiece, hypothetically.
Right.
You know, and you plug that into this equation, that deficit just rockets. Every dollar of additional spending you put in at this point increases the deficit, because they're already in the hole.
And you can see right here on that back when we started the law enforcement fund in two thousand and eight, here they were paying, um, the three percent, which was two hundred and forty-five thousand. They were paying nine-one-one out there and we were paying vehicles, capital, up to three hundred thousand. We cut that in half in two thousand and ten because we seen the sales tax going down. And then two thousand and eleven, we assumed it all. Two thousand and twelve, we assumed it all. Two thousand and thirteen was when we started putting a little.
So here's what I think we need to do. I'm just gonna, for purposes of tomorrow's discussion, I think we need to take the sheriff's expenditure side, okay, and put it all at zero growth. Administra, personnel cost, zero growth, except for the insurance, because I don't, I mean, that, we have to include that, because we've already agreed to it. Um, operating costs, sheriff's department expenses, all that stuff, we put it all at zero growth from last year.
I can, I can just turn this button right here to zero percent increase.
No, no, that's long-term. I'm talking about just this year.
Oh, just this year.
Okay, set it all at zero percent growth. So administration, for example, I'm looking at seven oh one. Administration on, and not personnel, the, the next line down, whoa, what are you doing?
Are you wanting to stay in that thing?
I'm using it, no, I'm, the, yes, that one. So I'm looking at M. N, excuse me, N thirty-four, okay? Should be seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I'd have to go back and look to see what makes up that. There's some stuff you can't change.
Well, okay, so let me ask a question. This year, we budgeted seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Why is there a thirty percent growth in that line? Thirty percent growth?
Well, that's based on actual, not what's budgeted, so I'd have to go back and look to.
Oh. No, it's Jeff vibrating, not me. Where, what number fund is this?
That's six hundred.
So I'm looking at sheriff, right? And I'm looking at se, where's seven oh one, administration, seven oh three, seven oh two, seven.
Yeah, seven oh one.
Come on, where the hell's seven oh one at? Good lord.
Yeah, you're looking at.
Seven oh one, okay, so not looking at personal or salaries.
Actually, this year's gonna end up at eight fifteen.
He's at nine sixty-five.
Nine sixty-five for next year.
How do you get there?
You gotta look at that other spreadsheet to find out.
I'm looking at it and I can't come up with it. It's very hard, this, the, the budgets don't match, they don't work together, they're very poorly laid out, no offense intended, cause I don't think it's your fault. But I look at seven oh one and I can't find nine sixty-five anywhere in seven oh one.
Well, you gotta take out so much stuff in that one to balance, let me make sure it balances.
I mean, you've got eight million, the minus N twenty-six, which is personnel.
Cause it's got capital.
Minus N thirty-three, which is grants. Minus N twenty-one, which is debt service.
Can't concentrate on that noise going on out there. I can't concentrate.
That whole section there just don't even make any sense at all.
Ooh, cold coffee, okay.
I threw mine away, I couldn't do anymore.
I shouldn't, I'm gonna be cramping up after a while, be trying to hold a drill or something.
Uh, she's trying to find something, so you got time.
Well, it's gotta work because the contingency, you see that contingency on, it's three million eight?
While you're looking for it, I'll get some like that.
And that's what I end up with on that one.
Get your water.
It's three million eight. Down here. Alright, so let me look up here. Okay, what I have to do...
Three point eight?
Yeah. What I have to do with admin is I take their total budget at eight-four, okay, you see that eight-four-three? Eight-four-three.
Where are you looking at it? I don't see eight forty-three.
Um, in my formula up there, up here.
Oh, yeah.
And that is the total of their budget right here for admin.
It's just a percentage then?
No. See their budget, well, I had to subtract something out of there, maybe we've changed something, but I don't know, I'll go back and look. But I have to take the, that minus N twenty-six, which is the payroll, minus N thirty-three, which, oh, that included their payroll. N thirty-three, which is grants, because all the grants are out of that line item. And then I have to subtract N twenty-one, which is the bond payment out of there. And, and then, what's that amount? That amount is the contingency, three million eight, and then I also have to subtract the one grant that isn't out of there anymore. Well, Mark, you see the bottom here on N, when I say we're gonna have three million eight left?
Mm-hmm.
That's the exact same amount that's over here in contingency in the budget, three million eight. So I know it's gotta work, but I mean...
Well, somehow that number's gone up dramatically.
Okay, I'll look into it.
I mean...
Well, not only that one, but jail services as well.
Yeah, it's up thirteen, fifteen percent, thirteen, fifteen percent maybe?
Which one y'all, law enforcement, financing strategy?
Uh, line like thirty-seven, thirty-four, thirty-seven.
And yet Patrol's dropped by a third, how does Patrol drop by a third?
I think theirs is because of their salaries, they've got a lot of people.
No, 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 I'm not in the salary one. How can Patrol?
Well, it's in personnel.
No, I'm looking at the non-personnel one, how can Patrol, N thirty-six, be one seventy-six when we budgeted two seventy-four last year?
Okay, well, it's in fuel, see right here, they budgeted a hundred and sixty, and I only got budgeted for next year a hundred and thirty. So there's a big Y, it went from two oh one to seventy-six.
Where are you at?
In the...
In the other spreadsheet.
Okay.
But now jail, why would jail go up?
So you're in the six hundred, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then what's the other one you gotta open? That's just the...
The law enforcement master's spreadsheet, or whatever it's called, financing strategy.
It's the very bottom one.
It's the bottom one?
Right there, yeah.
The food's going up tremendously in jail, if you look at...
Six, three, two, five thousand.
So is that the difference in the jail services in, big food?
No.
It's going up at least ten thousand.
It's got ten thousand, but it went up way more than that.
Well, that's ten thousand in one line item, then it went up three thousand in extradition, and then it's going up three thousand in inmate clothing.
Your spreadsheet that says budget worksheet, read only. The big budget, is there a way for you to add a column or revise your forms or something to do two thousand fourteen? One of those, I don't care if it's department budget, budget officer requested, or even commission approved, minus the two thousand thirteen budget?
Budget, amended budget, actual, just budget?
I think we only have amended budget on here, in other words, can we see where all the growth items are?
Sure.
Cause you know, it shows, for example, I mean, I'm looking at stuff that sees significant change, but it shows zero difference, cause it's the change between us and the auditor's budget, as opposed to...
And your, your form, is it estimate, I mean, is it an annualized two thousand thirteen?
Yes. And I don't like annualized because you don't know what's coming.
It's not what we budgeted.
There you go, and you can run that all the way down.
Yeah, it's gonna get all screwed up some places, but...
I'm sure it will. And I'll X out of this after you do that and save it, get back into it.
Which we don't care about, so do you just not worry about...
Are you deleting it?
Am I deleting it?
Are you deleting the whole column?
No, she's just adding the column, we're gonna, if you, in a minute, if you X out of this and you go back in after she saves this, we'll be able to look at what she's doing right here.
Which one is that?
That's, um...
It's the general.
The budget worksheet dot X L S X.
Mission.
He has more X's than me.
It's under sheriff.
Uh, it'll be, go down. It's gonna be that one, but wait till she saves it.
Budget worksheet, okay.
Wait till she saves it.
And I can save it.
Do you want to save changes? No, it's not mine. It's supposed to be read only, so why would I save changes? And... Where were we?
I just can't see that they needed three more full-time employees when the jail population has dropped by forty people.
They will, they will ask for more employees a hundred percent of the time.
And the first thing they'll tell you is, well, you remember when we opened the jail, we told you we needed thirty-five thousand new employees and you only gave us fifteen.
Well, we can add all the employees you want, but you'll never get a pay raise.
We can't do that even, we had all the employees, we can't balance...
Well, I realize that, but I mean, you know, that's, that's kinda the mentality, is like, look, we, we can add employees, but do you wanna get, ever get a pay raise? Do you wanna, you want the full cost of your insurance covered?
You don't have to make it all clean, Debbie, I just want, I wanna be able to actually see some of this stuff so we can...
Alright, well, it's saved, you can go in there.
Is it saved?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm opening up that.
Now, this isn't exactly how I base my other spreadsheet on.
I understand that.
Alright.
This gives us an opportunity to kinda look at this particular fund and see where are the big changes that we're dealing with.
And no offense, Debbie, but the way you understand them and you like to do it doesn't necessarily work for everybody. I mean, y'all, you look at yours and Jim's, they're different too, and so, I see where Mark's going with this, so...
I wanna look at jail, just at the jail.
So according to Jim, and you, which budgets did you subtract, just so I know, commission approved?
Uh, amended budget.
That's twenty thirteen and what?
Commission approved.
You're showing right now that admin is minus eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. And on your other spreadsheet, you're showing admin is up two hundred thousand dollars.
Well, but admin on the other one, you've gotta taking the consideration. It's the carry forward, I mean, it's the carry forward from last year versus this year, cause the carry forward's in there. Cause last year's carry forward was...
Well, I think if we put it in there, it... What they see and what we see is gonna be two different things.
Budgeted, now we're at three point eight, so two hundred and sixty-seven thousand of that is right there.
Okay, well, I'm looking at law enforcement total expense, okay? I'm at line three oh three on that worksheet. And as of now, the total expense is a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars less than last year's total expense, right? And the law enforcement financing strategy worksheet shows, which shows that we actually increased our deficit, right?
Okay.
Or no, we narrowed our deficit, we only narrowed it by thirty thousand dollars, so somewhere we're off by eighty thousand dollars. Does that make sense, Debbie?
No, not really, cause I'm still coming up with the total.
Okay, go over one line.
On this one?
One line.
Yeah.
Right there, go up one sp- one cell, okay, you're showing that for twenty fourteen, as of right now, we're having a ninety-three thousand dollar deficit, right?
No, a hundred and thirty-three, two thousand and fourteen's right here.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar deficit, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and last year we had a hundred and four thousand dollar deficit, right?
Based on actual, what I'm assuming, yes.
Alright, that means you're projecting that we're gonna, our budget this year is gonna be thirty thousand dollars farther upside down than it was last year.
Yes.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Then when I look at the budget spreadsheet, and I look at law enforcement total expense, the total expense for law enforcement's down.
Based on budget, not actual, budget.
So we're using apples and oranges.
Right, we're not using the same thing here, cause I thought you wanted me to go on budget, not actual, annualized.
Well, with annualized, we don't know, the, the problem with annualized is, we don't know any of that stuff still.
Right, but I mean, to me, if you wanna look at the twenty-year plan, I need to annualize it based on actual, that's what I did for eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, assuming.
But if I look at, so I look at the act- annualized budget.
Yes.
On the big budget spreadsheet, not only just the law enforcement one, on the other spreadsheet. And our annualized expenditures for this year are nine point nine nine six million dollars.
Yes.
And what do you have for, on the law enforcement financing?
Basically, I have...
You're gonna have six point nine million plus the bond payment, which is what?
Three point oh twenty-seven.
So...
Six point nine...
It's gonna be close?
Three, right?
So I'd add the...
Nine point nine three, I'm sorry, nine point nine three, and then where did you have your nine point nine, nine point nine four, one?
Nine point nine six is on the budget worksheet.
Nine nine three, thirty-one.
Nine 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 si- nine 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 six.
Nine nine, nine nine thirty-one, what the, that's what they add to, and how much did you say it was?
Nine 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 six.
So...
Oh, there's the nine nine six, gotcha.
And the total net down there at the bottom, you're showing that we should come out ahead seventy-six thousand dollars this year, right? Other spreadsheet?
Compared to the other one, yeah, this was right.
So annualized, we should actually end up with a profit this year.
Yeah, I'm not sure where she got that from. I mean, no, I don't know, it's all a guess, I don't know how Kristen annualized hers, this is how I annualize mine, is right here.
Divided by twelve, eleven times twelve.
I annualized it right here, based on twelve months, now Kristen did this way back in September, this annualizing right here, so keep that.
So that's an old annualizing.
Yeah.
This is why it's so difficult to do this budget, is...
I don't know how else to do it, but to tell you that this amount right here, what I'm estimating at the end of two thousand and fourteen.
Yes.
Is the same as what this carry forward is, which is basic, or contingency, I'm sorry.
In the annualized? What line is that?
Right here, it's right exactly where that is.
So the annualized plus the contingency gets you the thirteen point nine million.
One, um, line one seventy-seven.
Which, which one?
On the, um, budget worksheet.
Three nine five oh eight three zero?
Mm-hmm. Three eight five, yeah, is the same as what that is. Okay.
I, I, go back.
Okay.
I see zeros in the annualized budget for contingency expense, it says zero.
I'm looking at K, what I'm saying is the approved budget so far by the commission is one point eight five two.
And that consists of three point nine plus forty-five plus seventy-one twenty, plus fifty-six, plus one, minus one eighty, plus twenty-six, what are all those numbers?
Those were me adjusting the budget after changes were made. So just keep in mind right here, three point eight five, and then you just...
Where does the three nine one two nine two six come from? Look up in this, up in the, up, up, don't move your, don't move, don't, no, go, go up, don't click on anything, go back to where you were.
Okay.
Now go, move your cursor all the way up. Don't...
You set it up!
You're moving the cells, move the cursor, right there, where does that number come from?
Oh, it was the budget before we got started, and see, I have to balance this at the very bottom, after changes...
Go back. You're jumping around, you're doing a Dale Gibbler on me. Okay, that number.
Yes.
Right there, three point nine.
Yes.
Where is that in this document, where does that come from?
I started that to balance.
Okay, where, where is that number then?
The next step, that number?
Why isn't that number the number you start to balance?
Because I didn't agree with Jim's number, because I had to change the table.
So where does three point nine come from, tell me where it comes from, give me a point where I can look at it and say, okay, there's three point nine million, or is this just, I like three point nine million?
No, it is Jim's number, less the salaries taken out, that three percent that he put in there.
Okay. Okay.
I took those out, plus the health insurance additional cost.
So it's this number, right here.
Yes.
Less health insurance, or no, plus health insurance, less salaries.
Yes.
And it's three point nine one million.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I've adjusted other things in that budget as you guys have...
So what's the forty-five thousand?
I don't know.
What's the seventy, can I find those on here so I know where we made it?
But what, what difference does it make, I don't know what difference it makes.
Well, if that, it makes a difference, cause you're saying that number.
Yes.
Matches the bottom number on the other spreadsheet.
Yes.
Okay, well, if that number's no good, and I can't figure out how you got to that number, how can I rely on that number having to be the right number on the bottom of the other spreadsheet, does that make sense?
No. Right there, cash forward, I reduce cash forward, cause I don't believe it's gonna be as high as Kristen said.
Okay.
So that's one of the things I probably adjusted for, another thing, um, then you get into all the expenses for payroll that I adjusted, I did adjust equipment...
But I thought you already done all the expenses for payroll, you'd said you, that was how you got to the first big number.
I did, I mean, I'll have to go back and add them up if you want me to.
I'm just confused, Debbie, and I, I guess maybe we've now plowed on it so long, my brain's swimming.
But I do need to adjust it.
But tomorrow, we gotta sit down with the sheriff and go through this stuff, and, you know, from my perspective, the best way to start, and I mean, it's the worst way to start, except for all the other options, is to start with, okay. We're starting with, you get the same amount of money you got last year, you don't get a dime more, okay?
Okay.
Now, we've agreed we're gonna eat the healthcare expense, or that, that's gonna be added, so you get the healthcare expense.
Okay.
Now tell me what, Greg, tell me why you're gonna change any one of those items. And if he says, I want salaries up by a hundred and six thousand dollars, I wanna know why. If he says, equipment service goes up by two thousand, I wanna know why. The way we're gonna make that law enforce, I'm gonna get... The way we're gonna make that law enforcement budget work is by every line having to ju- be justified. Every line.
And we can, I mean...
And we don't do that. But what has to work is, and this is how, because of the form that we work in, Debbie? But what has to work is, and this is how, because of the form that we work in, Debbie? If we make a change to line one sixty-eight on the budget worksheet, which is repairs, and we reduce it by four thousand dollars? When we make that change, that, on that financing strategy sheet, it has to trick into that financing strategy sheet. So we can say, okay, here's where we're at.
I don't have it linked that way.
Well, I'm a little confused too, and, you know, that admin and the jail services, that number continues to go up in future years. And I'm not sure, how can you, I mean, that's a big portion of that bottom line there. Well, I mean, uh, thirty-four, but here's eight fifteen, nine sixty-five, now you look out here, and, and we're at one point two five nine million.
So, so I agree, so we have this huge jump, Debbie, this year, in admin.
And also jail services.
It goes from eight fifteen, and it jumps to nine sixty-five. After that, it looks like you got that two percent increase built in. This is like a CPI, general growth increase built in. Why the humongous jump in one year?
Well, now you jump a hundred thousand next year.
In admin and in jail.
Yeah.
Well, I'll just have to run a report to figure out, um, basically.
Cause, cause if, if that nine sixty-five, in N thirty-four, is actually eight fifteen? It changes all of our equations throughout, I don't know if I can change in here or not, can I?
You know what, I think I, I know where one of it is, but.
Five oh eight two, point one two, enter.
Cause I reduced that carry forward.
I mean, look at this, I just made that change. I just said that this year, we're gonna approve for administration the same amount, nothing more. I didn't do anything else. Look at the bottom line. I mean.
What did it change to?
It went from minus one thirty, what do we, was this year, one minus one thirty-three, to positive sixteen? And it gets me to where the flip is.
Mm-hmm.
Almost balanced, we almost hold our reserves.
Or if you could do the same with, where's N at? Do the same with jail services.
Jail services, right there, five oh five, oh oh oh. Balance budget, and have a surplus, at the end of the entire period, Debbie. If you go to your law enforcement spreadsheet, the financing one? The fin, law enforcement financing? And you make, I'm gonna change, I'm gonna have you change two cells. N thirty-four, make it eight one five oh eight two twelve.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Okay, and.
Just change it.
And, N thirty-seven, make it five oh five. No other changes, rest of the spreadsheet, it just balanced. If they don't spend any more next year, for administration and jail service, non-personnel, than they spend this year, the budget balances. Right there.
There you got it. Did you go all the way up and then?
Yeah, I, I mean, it runs some structural deficits a few years, but the reserves never go down, and then when the light switch, I mean, we're at twenty, that's twenty twenty-three. And you still have the reserves.
That means medical supplies cannot go up, that means food cannot go up.
One year, just one year, one year, only one year.
Okay, but.
Only one year, not every year. I'm not holding five oh five constant forever, I'm allowing it to have the increase going forward after this. Heck, if I take five oh five, what's your increase factor?
No, still, all are increased though. That jumped eight thirty-nine, eight sixty-four, those are still increased.
Yeah, it's two percent.
Right, which is still.
Yeah, CPI increase, I mean, if, if you stick it at two percent CPI.
You're not gonna hold health insurance, so, but that's what.
I'm not in, in the health insurance section, cause that's in personal service, right?
Right, but.
I didn't touch personal service.
I know, but going out, I only have the same amount.
I understand that, but I didn't touch personal service.
But I've got to figure out why.
So, you just look at those couple things, and the huge change in dollars.
I mean, you could.
Well, it's a big budget, yeah, that.
I don't, I'd have to look back at admin, why it's higher than jail. I can see why jail is. They went from, I'm annualizing food at two twenty-seven, they want two forty. I'm annualizing medical at one fifty-nine, and they want one ninety. So that's why they're going up.
That's in their requests, why is that in our financing spreadsheet?
Cause that's what, I don't know, that's what I based it on.
On what they asked for. So you've got included in here the four new positions, six new positions.
Oh, no, no, no. No, I'm basing it on Jim's budget, less the salaries.
So in other words, Jim makes these arbitrary decisions, he's gonna include things? And then we look at our financing thing, we say, we got a problem here with the financing thing. Oh, but it's already in the budget.
What do you want me to put in there?
I would like to see a budget that shows zero growth, except for what we know we have approved for growth. We have approved for growth.
But you invited these departments in to give you what they wanted different from what Jim had.
But, but Greg's is different, and that's why we're having the special sit-down with Greg on this, okay? I, I don't know about you, I don't have a desire to bring in anybody else to have this special sit-down and talk about it in such great detail. This one's a problem.
Zero growth over current, or?
Over annual, actual.
Over actual.
So in other words, he spends actually next year what he spends actually this year. And then let's talk about changes. Okay?
Alright.
Cause I think if we can go through that, we can start identifying where the cost drivers are. Because if we're just accepting what Jim plugs in, and Jim, cause Jim's showing a big structural deficit, and by the way, just for the record? Jim has a vested interest in showing it failing, because from day one, Jim's told us this is gonna fail. He didn't want us to build a new jail.
Alright.
He wanted us to save the money until we had enough money saved in cash to build a jail, see how that would've gone. So, he has had a vested interest from day one that this fails.
Deb, thoughts?
No, I mean, I'm fine, I just, I mean, we're, we're starting definitely all over with his, just because, if you take it back to actual, this year.
But if we don't go to actual, what we're doing is, we're starting out by saying, we agree that you're gonna increase everything by thirty percent. Now, you want an extra fifteen on top of the thirty, let's talk about the extra fifteen. Why don't we start off by saying, you don't get anything? Now explain why we need to move these things up.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, probably a better way to approach it with them, to start.
I mean, the best way to start would be, put all zeros in all these columns, and make them come in, I mean, zero-based budgeting's the best way to do it, and make them come in and justify every single thing.
Don't we do that with the other ones?
They feel like they did when they submitted their budget to Jim.
Right, okay. You tell me, you worked on all the budgets, how many people started off with zero?
No, they started off with what they got last year.
Which is not the same as starting at zero and justifying everything.
I know.
That's the best way to do it, it's also enormously time-consuming, and frankly, it's very difficult to do in the short timeframe we get it. But this budget, we have to really pay attention to. Cause we can't, we can't afford to screw it up, Debbie.
We can make little changes this year, though, I mean, but, then we'd have money to free up to, to do other stuff next year.
If we can find two or three hundred thousand dollars in savings this year, and, and we don't go in next year to spend it all? We can fix the budget. The beauty of this.
Fix that long range.
Yeah, the beauty of this fund is, is it's really not that far out of whack. If we can control the growth, we can keep it in, cause we can't, we have no impact on the revenue, but if we can control the growth of expenditures, I think we can make this thing work.
Well, and just those two changes, at flat growth, and if we see growth next year? We're, we don't have to worry about that.
I mean, look at this, look at this, look at this, let me show you this thing.
I don't wanna change revenue.
Let me show you this thing, I'm gonna show you something really crazy, watch this. Remember that same number? Remember the same number, watch this.
What'd you do, change the number at the top?
Look at that.
Zero, say read only, tell me it does.
Yes, look at that.
We've been, well, we've been changing stuff.
Look at that. Holding those two accounts even.
We, we won't save it, so.
Holding those two accounts even, we talked about, okay?
Uh-huh.
And putting one percent sales tax growth. Only one percent sales tax growth.
You have two point seven five million. And reserves, yeah.
I mean, we completely fixed the budget. Assuming one percent sales tax growth, now I'm, I don't agree to, I'm not putting in one percent sales tax.
Right.
But that shows you how.
Hypothetically.
That shows you how close it is to making this budget work.
Well, and I went and talked to Jim about that before too, cause you two disagree, and y'all, I don't know, I think y'all are saying the same thing half the time, but. I went up and sat with him, and, you know, basically, he said that. You know, if there's an increase.